For very low income clients, 100% of the loan will be forgiven at the end of the loan term. That means very low. It does not mean moderate and below, correct?
Correct.
This means the 50% below AMI. Okay. And then I just had a question about how many very low have we assisted in Clearwater recently?
Recently, I don't know of any.
Okay. Is it because of these numbers?
It's primarily because the cost of housing right now. Most very low income households are unable to obtain a first mortgage.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else consent on this?
Yes.
Thank you. Two point two.
I approve an amendment to the Affordable Housing Policies of fiscal year 2022, City Council allocation of general fund budget related to the receipt of revenue recovery funds.
Good morning, Denise Sanderson, Economic Development and Housing. So the last time we talked about this particular policy was on November 3rd when you adopted all of the policies associated with the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Now we're referring to them as revenue recovery of Level 2 electric vehicle capable wiring, including the cost of engineering permitting and inspections. This was not an allowed expense previously, and we thought it was appropriate to bring it into this funding allocation. We also increased the maximum loan amount of per unit of multifamily rental rehabs and changes to the terms for single family home rehab loans. So this is to be consistent with the local housing assistance plan. And it's noted in here that changes that we are making to this, if the terms are not specifically detailed within the affordable housing policy, excuse me, within this revenue recovery policy, then the local housing assistance plan terms and conditions prevail. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions or comments on this one? Consent?
Yes.
Thank you. Two point three.
I approve a purchase contract between the City of Clearwater and Habitat for Humanity for real property located at 1454 South Martin Luther King Junior Avenue.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Good morning.
My name is Dylan Mayhew, Senior Real Estate Coordinator for Economic Development and Housing. On December 1st, 2022, council authorized staff to negotiate a contract for sale of real property to Habitat for Humanity and Clearwater Neighborhood Housing Services for real property located at 1454 South MLK Avenue. I'm here to review terms and conditions of the contract that have been negotiated between developers and staff. Denise Sanderson is present to provide insight in the matters related to grant funding or affordable housing policy, while the developers are also here to address any questions regarding the project. In accordance with the terms of the contract, the development shall be consistent with the buyer's response to City of Clearwater RFP 43-22. The buyer shall construct 24 units of mixed income owner occupied townhomes with 50% of the units reserved for households with a total household income up to 80% of area median income, that's AMI. The remaining 50% will be reserved for households with total household income up to 120% AMI. Closing date will occur only before 365 days from the contract effective date, and all predevelopment activities must be complete prior to closing, including but not limited to funding commitments, site approval, and building permits. The buyer is required to commence construction of Phase 1 within one year of closing and Phase 2 within two years of closing with a project completion deadline of December 2026. In December, there were some concerns raised regarding the HOA. The developers are aware that the long-term success of the community will depend in part on a well-established HOA and have agreed to appoint one member from either organization to serve on the Homeowners Association managing board for the duration of the required 20-year affordable period. They will also contract with a third-party HOA management company to handle HOA operations and financials, contribute $1,000 per unit to the HOA reserve accounts, and coordinate with lenders to ensure the HOA fees are included in the monthly mortgage escrow payments. Also in December, we discussed our commitment to exploring the inclusion of sustainability features consistent with our green print 2.0 objectives. Consistent with this, the terms and conditions of this agreement are as follows. The city will provide, the city will fund the permitting, installation, and inspection of Level 2 EV charging capabilities. Units will accommodate a Level 2 charging system by means of a 240 volt dedicated circuit. Funding contributions are not to exceed $2,000 per unit or $48,000 in total and is to be funded by the revenue recovery funds allocated to the Housing Division, also known as ARPA. City will also fund five kilowatt solar, uh, city will also fund five kilowatt solar installations for each townhome unit. Solar United Neighbors has confirmed the current co-op pricing for this is $2.50 per watt or $12,500 per kilowatt for five kilowatt unit. This equates to $300,000 plus a 12% contingency for a not-to-exceed amount of $336,000. This too shall be funded by the Housing Division's ARPA funds. I'd be happy to address any questions at this time.
Any questions or comments on this one?
I just want to say I'm really excited to see this, and I applaud Clearwater Housing Authority as well as Habitat for working together in the city to do this. I think it's going to be a phenomenal project. Really proud that it's the first one of its kind here in Clearwater, and I think these families are going to really realize great benefit and save, really, it's about a million dollars over the course of that life for all of them. You know, not each individually, but in collection. And that's money that can be put towards, you know, daycare and living expenses and back into our economy rather than into the cost of transportation and Duke Energy's pocket. So, super excited about that.
Anything else on this? Consent?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Parks and Rec, three point one.
I amend Clearwater Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22. I am amending Article 2, Use Regulations in Article 3, Special Events, and pass ordinance 9689-23 on first reading.
Good morning, Mayor, council members.
Good morning.
Art Cader, Director of Parks and Recreation. Article 2 of Chapter 22 of the Code of Ordinances is the code which provides the rules and regulations to basically govern the parks system. Article 3 of 22 basically governs the special event process. These articles have not been amended since 2014. The amendments we're bringing forward today really are needed to clarify and modify and revise some of the language in the regulations for parks. There are actually 53 various sections in this article, and of that, we are basically changing or modifying only 17 of those. That's why you only see the 17 and not the entire ordinance before you. Most of the changes are minor and for clarification purposes only. So I'm not going to go over all the changes, but we'll certainly answer any questions you might have of that. However, I would like to bring your attention to some of the probably the more important changes. Section 2224 basically updates the hours of operation for our parks. One of the reasons we did this, of course, was for Coachman Park. And Coachman Park hours currently is closed from 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM. We are changing that to be closed from 12:00 AM to 5:00 AM. Also included in here is the Country Club, the Clearwater Country Club. Been named that for many, many years. The operator there and Parks and Recreation agree that the name should be changed to Clearwater Golf Club. Things have changed over the years. Country Club kinda denotes something that has swimming pools, tennis courts, those types of things, and they believe this will be a good change. We did the same thing for the Clearwater Executive Golf Course seven years ago and call it the Landings. There are also several sections in here that you would see that the Courtney Campbell Causeway Recreation Area came up. We changed several of those sections dealing with fires, grills, camping, horses, domestic animals, et cetera. Section 2259 and 89 and 90 deal with the alcohol beverage permits that we use for special events that allows and also it will allow for liquor to be sold as a, at a special event in addition to beer and wine. So I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions or comments on this item? Yes, ma'am.
Hey, just a couple of clarifications. So I understand that they call it, I guess, tents or something, right? I just need a clarification that that does not apply to the ones that you pop up. You're looking more like the camping tents rather than, you know, the ones that you pop up and you can get out.
Yes.
Okay, because I had a couple of questions from that. And then regarding the liquor applications?
Yes.
There's no way we can keep it at 15 days? It has to be 30?
Uh, I am not sure. I would, I would have to yield to, you know, the reason we do that in advance is certainly to have the opportunity to go through that and to revise that, make sure that it's, that is correct. One of the main reasons we do this, of course, obviously Ruth Eckert Hall will be operating the sound and they have the question that liquor be allowed.
Okay. There's one more thing. Okay, I guess that's it. Everything else is pretty good.
Anyone else on this? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I had a couple of questions. Did you talk, was this presented to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board at all?
Yes, I did. I sent this to all the members of Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for their comments and for, basically I did receive comments from two of the board members, and we've addressed all of their issues or concerns, of which are generally just questions about, you know, the changes, modifications, that type of thing. Yes.
Thanks. I just, you know, when it says parks are closed from, you know, sunset to sunrise, what does, can you just explain what does closed mean? Because I think about a number of the parks like Delora, Delora Park Trail, Glen Oaks, Cape Bay Park on San Key, where you can actually walk around the perimeter, you know, at night. Are people allowed to walk around the perimeter and use those?
Not on trails, no.
Not on internal trails?
No.
Okay. And then, okay. And what's the distinction, I mean, about different rec centers and their hours? Those are up to the rec center directors? There's a little variety there?
Well, the variety generally has to do with budgets, too.
Okay.
We can't fund opening all of our parks as, or rec centers as long as we'd really like. Some of them will be open for much longer. As well as some of the park hours you'll see in some of the neighborhood parks are different. They vary generally because of homeowner association involvement and request by the, by the people that live there. Certainly sometimes noise or lights or whatever the case may be as to why they're at nine rather than 10 o'clock.
What's the feedback that you have on, on the park section that says open for permitted use only? So this is Carpenter Field, Cooper's Point Nature Park, Countryside Sports Complex, Eddie Seymour, all those, you know, did the advisory board have any comment about that? Because I remember John Jennings had said something about unlocking all those, a number of parks to have them accessible by residents.
The, the conversation has come up in the past. What we do have, and several people just don't know it, is that we do have several locations and sites where there, it is open to the public at any time they want to go in and play ball there. For example, Merrimack Park, Woodgate Park, Belmont Park, some of those are open right now, you know, for the public. We are looking at a way in which we can open some of those facilities as well. I guess that's me. Cut your phones off.
ET phone.
I did cut it off. Was that me? Okay, sorry about that.
I had a question about, there's an item on page nine that says surfboards, sailboats, motorboats, personal watercraft, or singular hard-surfaced objects are not permitted to be beached on any public beach or to be operated in any area described. Does that mean like on the beach on San Key that people can't bring a paddleboard up if they're paddleboarding on the beach, on the water and come on up and?
I'm sorry, page nine you're talking about?
Yeah, it's page nine, number six. I just, I see paddleboarders out there frequently and I'm thinking they, you know, is that what a singular hard-surfaced object, that's a paddleboard?
I would think that, you know, that was not the intent on a paddleboard necessarily. Basically, the concern here is in areas that there could be swimming and the danger of the two just coexisting.
Colliding.
They just collide and there's a problem with that.
Yeah.
That is certainly why that is, that is incorporated here.
Okay. Right. I just, I mean, and I don't see a whole lot of enforcement or people out there, but, but I do see paddleboarders that want to come on the beach every now and then. And what's the, so there's a section about aircraft and you've added drones?
Yes.
What was, what was the impetus of that? Why, why do we not allow drones?
I think the issue, the reason we don't allow drones would be the same reason we don't allow model airplanes to drive or start or come off of a park property or city property. Same issue is with someone puts a drone out there, you know, we don't have any control over, you know, who's using it, those types of things. So basically, when people want to use drones, they do come to us for a permit to allow them to be able to use the drone there. But personal drones, we would say that as a dangerous type activity, that someone could get injured and hurt. That is the reason we basically put that there.
I didn't know if it had to do with, with, you know, an artist not wanting drones to be near the performance venue and filming them or?
No.
No? Okay. There's a section on page 17 that says the applicant shall pay all additional costs of police and other city services attributable to the sale or consumption of alcoholic beverages during the activity. So does, how do we calculate that? What does that mean? That when, when there's a sale of alcohol, do they, I mean, how, how do we know how much?
How much do they drink?
How, no, how much they're going to pay for our police services? Because it says the applicant shall pay all additional costs of police and other city services attributable to the sale or consumption of alcoholic beverages. So how do you designate what the costs are related to selling alcohol versus not selling?
We basically, there, you would need additional police when you sell alcohol.
Okay.
We require that.
Okay.
And basically, the special event will actually say how many police officers are there, when they're there, the time that they're there. If, for example, that it goes longer or less, or they need more police officers, then that's what that really is saying. You need to cover that additional cost to do that.
So if there's a family event without alcohol, then let's say they want five additional officers. But if there's a more robust event with alcohol and they're requesting 12 officers, then they pay the difference.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Anything else, Mr. Obrand?
Okay, back to the drones. One of the things I learned was that federal parks do not allow operation of drones in the park. But they do, they do let operation of drones flying over the park unless, not, you cannot take off or land in the park. Is, and you have it as described in section 33.114. Are you, are you aligning that to the federal guidelines, or does this mean that drones cannot fly over any public parks, even if they're?
The intent here was to basically use a park to take off.
And land.
And land.
Okay.
Not touch park property for that. Not for, for instance, you have news media, you have all kinds of people that use drones. Just recently, we did it for, out at the, for the fireworks show, they went and looked at an eagle that was up there. So they had drones up there looking at those.
Okay.
But they weren't landing on park property.
And then back to the surf and the paddleboards and so forth. So this concerned me a few years ago when I was talking about it, and I, just as clarification, the public beaches, you have some, I guess, some navigation areas in here. I don't know what that is. Where do you say longitude, latitude, this and that? But if you get north of Acacia, you could surf up there, you could paddleboard. You're just talking about that basically the public beach, well, does that stop at, it stops?
Service.
Okay, there you go. So just the areas people are swimming, basically as a public beach, you go north of that or any other areas that apply.
But south on San Key where we have people entering that whole San Key Strip, south of Clearwater, you know, Bel Air shores and all that stuff, Indian Rocks, and they might enter on their paddleboard and come on up to the San Key art area and want to get off the paddleboard.
I wouldn't think that'd be public beaches up there.
It is a public beach and it is, you know, open, actually, we, you know, regulate parking there, do all those trailers, launching of boats and everything else. That really, we have very few that come out there right now. I think bigger issues, Courtney Campbell Causeway, that's why we're just trying to prevent any issues or problems that might occur in those locations, conflict.
Okay. Anything else?
Yep.
All right, thank you. Three point two.
Authorize a purchase order to Sintas Corporation for the purchase of first aid and safety supplies.
Art Cader, Director of Parks and Recreation. Over the past several years, the city has had a successful relationship with Sintas Corporation, which has supplied first aid supplies, safety supplies, uniforms, the rental of uniforms and for various facilities and various city departments. For example, Public Utilities and the General Services Department, they rent uniforms as well as purchase uniforms. Parks and Recreation and other departments purchase their uniforms from them. Facility Services, custodial, basically there are safety mats, mop, soap, all of those cleaning supplies. All departments basically purchase their first aid, safety supplies. They do not have to purchase them, but that is one thing they could take advantage of. AEDs, eye protection. General Services, we might use this, but there also is in this contract inspections of fire extinguishers, irrigation, I'm sorry, sprinkler systems and fire alarms. Available to answer any questions you might have or any other departments that might be using these commodities.
Any questions on this item? Yes, ma'am.
So I'm glad we have a contract with Sintas, and I know that they're huge, and I'm glad that we can piggyback on other fair contracts. But I just, the question is more like, when do you determine it's time to go out for another bid to see if there are lower priced providers?
Rather than piggyback, you know?
Yeah, rather than, I mean, how do you make that decision?
I think that generally is, is a decision that has to be made, you know, when prices are, you know, increase so much. But also, we've, again, had this relationship with just ended, or leaving a contract, and we need this to renew it, basically. A new contract with Sintas rather than going out for an RFP. As you know, those all take a lot of time, a lot of effort and everything else, and if somebody's already done a lot of the work, it certainly helps us from the perspective of our staff and our time that we have. But I do understand the question. Yes.
Thanks.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Consent on that one?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Three point three.
I approve the use of admission tickets and VIP passes for city-sponsored events, cosponsored events, and events at the Sound City Council Policy.
Okay. Art Cader, Parks and Recreation Director. The city currently has an administrative policy, which is number 11, 1011. It provides guidelines for the distribution and the reporting of tickets and VIP passes for special events. This policy has been in place since 2005. Remember, this is an administrative policy. Staff is looking for your direction regarding the establishment of a new council policy, number 5-8, rather than continuing with the current administrative policy, to govern the use, distribution, and reporting of tickets, VIP passes for special events, and for events cosponsored and sponsored by the City of Clearwater, and events that are held at the Sound. This is needed in order to update and clarify the current process as well as to address ticket allocation from the new venue license agreement that the city has with Ruth Eckert Hall regarding the Sound. That is section 5.3, ticket, city ticket allocation. The proposed policy is divided really in three sections. The first section is procedure for distribution of tickets. Basically, the procedure, Parks and Recreation will administer this. The second part is distribution process. It provides how the tickets are distributed. There are two areas there. The first are special event agreements in general. These are already covered by the administrative policy, but we'd be getting rid of that and putting it in this policy. The second one is new tickets to the Sound, which is section 5.3. It provides 24 free tickets to the city for every performance at the Sound and thus requiring a policy on how these to be distributed. The third part is the reporting requirements. These are the legal requirements for those receiving tickets. Basically, the law, it's the taxes, et cetera. This is also already in the administrative policy that needs to be in this policy as well. If the proposed council policy is approved, the Parks and Recreation Department will develop an efficient and transparent process to receive, distribute, and report the tickets as defined by the policy. I'm available to answer any questions.
Questions or comments on this item? Yes, sir.
Okay, so under section B, talking about tickets to the Sound, you have six tickets in first five rows, six tickets in the highest price level, 12 tickets in the section of licensee's choosing. Does that, that's Ruth Eckert, I imagine?
Yes, that is correct.
And they will say on each event, those 12 tickets where that's going to be?
That is correct.
It could differ per event, I imagine.
Yes, they will.
Okay. So that would be somewhere under the roof, I imagine?
Yes, it will.
Okay, that's it.
Anything else? Yes, ma'am.
So I have a concern about tickets being given to elected officials. And as an elected official, it's my personal policy not to take gifts or items of value, including tickets to events and meals from current or potential vendors that the city contracts with or govern. So I see it as a potential conflict of interest for decisions that come before the council. I mean, we help choose operators and look at the contract and vote on contracts. I also think it's problematic that elected officials are able to give away free tickets to others, especially anyone that has any current or potential business with the city or, you know, those who may be campaign donors. I, I think it just sets elected officials up for potential conflict, and I think perception is important. I, I also have a question about, where is it? There's language in here that you have that says every attempt will be made in each contract or agreement to specify not only the number of tickets to be distributed, but also the people they are inviting to the event. But, but then you have an attachment of the document where all that information is going to be gathered. So it will be, it's not every attempt will be made, but it will be, right?
Yes, it will be done, yes.
Okay. And then, and then the department director shall submit a copy of the reporting forms to the payroll department biweekly in accordance and to record the value of these special event tickets. And the value, does it include, you know, parking passes and taxes and all that business, or is it just the face value of the ticket?
I believe it includes everything.
Everything.
The total cost.
Okay.
Yes, it would be wrapped up in the total cost, best I know.
Okay.
Okay? I don't think there's any parking passes associated with the Sound at all. So it's just simply the ticket and anything involved with that.
Okay. And then when there's a reporting of an amount of $100, I think, or more, is that per ticket or it would be the total value of the two tickets?
It would be the total value of the tickets.
Or not individually?
I believe, yes.
Anything else?
Look, I think Mr. Margoles is going to answer that question about the ticket.
So, may I call him? If he wanted to.
I didn't say, I'm sorry.
All right, so a couple of things here. So number one, just on the ethics side of it, I mean, I want to emphasize, you know, as, as we've discussed, that this gift is being paid for by the city. It is not being paid for by Ruth Eckert, it's not being paid for by vendors. When it comes to gifts that are subsidized or comped by vendors, Florida law is very strict. When it comes to, for example, and that includes nonprofits, right? So that can include a wide range of organizations that we partner with, ranging from Ruth Eckert Hall, the Aquarium, Clearwater for Youth, as well as for-profit organizations such as the Phillies. So it is true that we could not allow and would not allow those organizations to comp tickets for council members or myself or the managers, since we are also reporting individuals, if the value of that gift were to exceed $100 per event. I mean, that is strictly prohibited. However, the Florida Ethics Commission has said on many, many occasions that if the government entity is the one that is paying for or subsidizing the cost, it's totally fine. So in this particular instance, the city has entered into a arms-length bargain for transaction with Ruth Eckert Hall, and the city, through our contract with Ruth Eckert, is essentially paying fair market value. This is part of our bargain for exchange. It's not a gift from Ruth Eckert. The city has arranged this as part of an omnibus contract. It's part of the compensation that is being given to the city in exchange for their right to operate the amphitheater. Many other cities go through this, as well as counties. I would say candidly that just about every city and county I know that operates a venue of substantial size has some kind of seating for elected officials, whether that's a skybox, whether that is some other, you know, designated area, whether it's seats or things like that. So I don't think this is out of the norm at all, and I frankly do not see, you know, any sort of ethics dilemma, given the way this contract is, is set up. However, I do, you know, want to point However, I do, you know, wanna point out that the way that this proposal or this policy's being drafted gives each of you the option to decide individually what you are comfortable with as far as taking seats or not. And so, if any member of the council is not comfortable with or does not want to take seats for any reason, then just don't and it will go down the list. And I will say, you know, it's council member Beckman's point, personally, I don't intend to either. I actually intend to give my tickets to my staff. I mean, that's just personal preference. You know, I don't think it's right or wrong, it's just how I choose to do business. But that is an individual choice that can and should be made by each person who receives tickets. So, that is how it's, how it's structured. And as far as the question about the dollar amounts, so the hundred dollar limit, that hundred dollars, whether it's coming from a vendor or, as it is in this case, being subsidized by the city, is based on the face value of the ticket, if there is a face value. If there is no face value, then there's a different calculation. But with these types of tickets, there's gonna be a face value. If you get two tickets, it is the combined value of those tickets. So, for example, if I get two tickets that are each valued at seventy bucks, then that means the total value of the gift is a hundred and forty dollars. Now, I do wanna point out, as noted in the policy, that you will have to report the gift if you accept it. So, for each event that you accept two tickets for, make sure on your ethics disclosure each, each quarter that it is reported as an appropriate gift for, as reporting individuals. That rule only applies to us on the dais and a couple staff individuals. There are certain, there are certain department heads who are also subject to that rule, who are reporting individuals, but most of them are not. I, you know, I will work with staff on that if they, if staff ends up getting tickets to make sure they report it correctly. And then finally, on the tax aspect of it, as the council knows, we recently engaged Kristen Keen, who's an attorney with Carlton Fields and is a board certified tax expert. Kristen is working with us, are participated in a meeting recently and Kristen's gonna help us put together the tax aspect of this to make sure that we are complying with all the IRS regulations and to, on one hand, minimize the tax burden that anyone has to pay, but on the other hand, making sure we stay out of hot water and don't get into trouble with IRS. So, I feel like we have a pretty good plan to, to manage this.
Okay.
So, this could be, you know, this could be thousands of dollars worth of benefits that the, that council members would get entitled to two tickets for every concert, correct? If, if he or she takes advantage of those?
I, I believe that is, that is correct. I mean, if we were to, if we multiply that out, I think that as presented, that is definitely, that is, that is correct. Now, it's interesting, you know, as, as you know, this, this contract was negotiated by the former city manager, right? And as this council is well aware, you know, he was in charge of that process and kinda had his own thought processes on how it should look and the contract we have is the contract that we have. You know, one way to look at this is that we're going to get the tickets no matter what because it's part of the contract, right? Ruth Eckert has already set aside the tickets, they can't sell them, they can't do anything with it. So, we're getting the tickets no matter what. It's just a question internally of how we want to distribute and how we wanna deal with the tickets, but we're getting them no matter what.
I get that and I pre, I mean, that's fine, that bridges, we cross that bridge. I just think, you know, for council members to have the perk of two free tickets to every single event at, or at, at the Sound is, is, is pretty extravagant. And then the ability to take those tickets and give to whoever he or she wants is another step. So, I get that we have the ticket option, but I would, you know, I'm, I'm cautious about the ability to give those tickets away to whomever. And if, if a person gives the tickets away, is that name of that person recorded on your ledger, who my tickets went to? Did they go to my son or my daughter or business owner or, you know, friend or neighbor?
There is current, that's a good question. There's currently no requirement in Florida law to do that. However, the council could make that a rule. Now, as a practical matter, some of these rules can be very difficult to enforce. So, for example, let's say that the council wanted to pass a policy, let's say the council puts it in a policy which says that the council cannot give away the tickets to anyone else. That can go in the policy, but how will you enforce it, right? I mean, if a particular council member does end up giving away their tickets, what would we do? I mean, there's no real, there's no mechanism to impose a fine, there's no mechanism to remove someone from office, there's no, there's no consequence or penalty associated with it. So, we could put that in the policy, but as a practical matter, I think the enforcement of it would be challenging, especially in the years ahead when we start having, you know, council will rotate, right? And we'll start having new council members join the, the city who were not even part of this. And so, it becomes harder and harder to police over time. Like, this council was pretty familiar with it because this council was involved with the, you know, with the contract, with Ruth Eckert, with the opening of the hall, you know, I'm sorry, the opening of the park, et cetera. I think the enforcement of it is difficult, but if the council would like to input, put a rule on there which says no distribution of tickets, I think the council can certainly, certainly do that. As I said, my plan is to distribute them internally to my staff, so that's just my personal choice.
I would say there's, I don't, for me, I don't think there's a problem and I guess if you're gonna, to distribute them, I'd hate to have them go to waste, but I think it should be recorded, who those tickets went to. There just should be an accounting to who, you've accepted them, you're not able to go, so who are you giving them to?
If the council would like to put that in the policy, that's, would be the direction from the council.
Can I jump in?
Yes.
Okay. So, the way I see it, it's quite simple. We are the council that actually negotiated this deal, so this is not a surprise to us, these tickets. The only thing that's the difference is how it's being dispersed. That's, to me, the only thing that's new. But at the end of the day, this is tickets to a venue that the city owns, so it's not a gift in my mind. I am open to either recording or, or restricting how we, the council, give our tickets, along the lines of maybe only giving it to our family so that there's no conflict in the future with donors or businesses. But this is not new, we, we, this is part of our negotiations with Ruth Eckert Hall, so I'm very comfortable with it. And since we're recording it, it's going to be transparent.
Anyone else?
I, I doubt that I'd be going to very many concerts myself unless they find somebody to dig up the Lake Mount or me or, or Elizabeth Gerald. But I, I can't see, you know, giving my tickets to a constituent who otherwise wouldn't be able to afford going to the concert. So, I, I think that's, you know, a decent way to use those tickets.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure this, I'm sure this goes without saying, but I'm still gonna say it, I don't leave you guys for having the conversation. I don't have any legal problem if the council, if the council does not wanna put it in policy to limit the external distribution of the tickets, I'm fine with that from a legal perspective. I'm sure it goes without saying, but there cannot be any sort of quid pro quo. You know, we cannot buy people's votes with tickets, cannot have any sort of reciprocal arrangement. Again, not suggesting that would ever be the case, but just wanted to make sure that everyone in the public knows that the city does not do that, elected officials don't do that. And so, certainly to the council, to the vice mayor's point, you know, I think giving it to someone who otherwise could not afford to go is a very good and very noble usage of them, but definitely I want the public to know that we do not and cannot give them out in exchange for votes.
I'll tell them not to vote for me.
I would, I would propose that we add that there's a requirement that if we give up, if, if a council member chooses to give away the free tickets, that they need to report to Parks and Rec, whatever the accounting is, who those tickets went to.
Just do that on Thursday, right?
That will be up to the council. I mean, if, if the council would like to incorporate that rule, I would recommend we have that discussion now, so that way for Thursday, it's ready to, to be in there.
I'm not gonna opine because I wasn't involved with this, so I'll just go with, go with the flow on this one.
I'm open to it.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay, put it in.
Yeah, we already have the process there that's easily done. We just simply say if those two tickets go, we have a reporting there, we can put who they are go to. I'd like to also point out, we're talking about two tickets, whether it's to you or to someone else. It's not two plus, oh, by the way, I wanna get four more tickets for so and so. If you notice, this policy also has a way in which you can purchase additional tickets, but that's at full price. So, we're talking about two tickets.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
And you're still, if it's over a hundred bucks, you're still taking that onto yourself as a reporting, so.
Absolutely, for reporting, yes.
All right, anything else on this item? Okay, thank you. Let's go to the police department, four point one, please.
Approved amendment to the Clearwater Code of Ordinances, Chapter twenty-one, offenses, repealing section twenty-one point twelve relating to prostitution.
Morning, everyone. Michael Wallach, interim chief of police. Several months back, members of the police department's command staff, along with legal advisor Melissa Isbell, began a rigorous process of reviewing the Clearwater Code or, Clearwater Code ordinances for items that were either outdated, no longer used or codified in other areas of enforcement. The first item before you is repealing section twenty-one point one-two code ordinances relating to the offensive prostitution. Chapter twenty-one, section twenty-one point twelve of the Clearwater Code of Ordinances contains of the offensive prostitution. Because the offensive prostitution is already codified in section seven ninety-six point oh seven of the Florida State statutes, section twenty-one point one-two of the code ordinances is redundant, it is not being used to enforce the prohibited act of prostitution within the city's municipal boundaries and should be repealed.
Okay, any questions or comments on this item? Okay, thank you. Four point two, please.
Approved amendment to the Clearwater Code of Ordinances, repealing chapter twenty-one, Article two, relating to registration of ex-convicts.
Morning, everyone. Michael Wallach, interim chief of police. Apologize, this one's a little bit longer, but several months back, again, we were trying to review the ordinances for things that are outdated or no longer used or codified in other areas of enforcement. The item before you this time is chapter twenty-one, Article two, the code ordinances relating to the registration of ex-convicts. Chapter twenty-one, Article two of the Clearwater Code of Ordinances requires the registry of ex-convicts to be kept by the Clearwater Police Department. Clearwater Statute seven seventy-five point one-three requires the county sheriff to keep a registry of convicted felons. Therefore, chapter twenty-one, Article two of the code ordinances is redundant and should be reappealed. Clearwater Statute seven seventy-five point one-three imposes a registration requirement for anyone convicted of any felony in the state of Florida. Convicted felons are required to register with the sheriff within forty-eight hours of entering any county within the state of Florida. The required registration includes being fingerprinted and photographed. Furthermore, the registration requirement also applies to anyone convicted of a felony in any state or federal court outside the state of Florida. In accordance with Florida State Statute seven seventy-five point one-three, convicted felons can register at the Penales County Sheriff's Office, AFIS Division.
Any questions or comments on this one? Yes.
Chief, or, I, I have a, a couple of questions about this one. So, this Florida statute imposes a registration requirement for anyone convicted of a felony in the state of Florida or anywhere else?
Correct.
Okay? And those convicted felons are required to register with the sheriff within forty-eight hours and it includes being fingerprinted and photographed anytime they enter any county within the state of Florida?
Correct.
All right. So, I have a, a couple of questions. Is this after they have served time, paid fines and fees?
Correct.
Really? This is a lifelong requirement?
Yes, but it's very hard to control who, we don't know who's coming and going to the beach or stuff like that, so it's very hard to enforce.
Yeah.
I don't know if John Smith driving down the street is a convicted felon or not, so it's very hard to enforce. We do the best we can with what we have.
Yeah.
Working with the sheriff's office.
And so, my question is, whenever they enter the county, is it for how long? For the weekend, a concert event, and then how are we supposed to know? You know, I mean?
Well, that's where we have to go upon what they're supposed to do and know in right form, but unfortunately, we can't enforce that if we don't know who's driving down the street. We do the best we can. There is some people that do it, but when I contact the sheriff's office, they're, they stay on top of it, but that again, like I said, there's very hard to know who's coming and who's not coming. If someone's coming from Alabama, we don't know that.
And can you, I mean, I don't know if you can give your, opine on this, but what's the rationale after somebody who has been convicted of a felony, has served their time, paid their fines and fees, and, and what's, what's the rationale for the requirement that you need to be fingerprinted and photographed every time you enter a county in the state of Florida?
I think there's just the, the subject of the future crime that could be committed where there's something on file that this person did come in where they've been convicted of a crime in the past. Documentation, people change over the course of time, their facial descriptions and their body description.
Okay. I just, I just found it shocking that that was a requirement.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Four point three.
Approved amendment to the Clearwater Code of Ordinances, Chapter twenty-one, offenses, repealing section twenty-one point twenty relating to the offensive sitting or lying down in Clearwater Downtown Core.
Morning, Michael Wallach, interim chief of police. Several months back, again, members of Clearwater Police Department's command staff began a rigorous process of reviewing the code ordinances for items that were outdated, no longer used or codified in other areas of enforcement. The item for you this time is Clearwater Ordinance, section, Chapter twenty-one, section twenty-one point two zero with code ordinances relating to the offensive sitting or lying down in the Clearwater Downtown Core Redevelopment Zone, Gateway Corridor and the Clearwater Beach Tourist Zone. Chapter twenty-one, section twenty-one point two zero of the Clearwater Code of Ordinances prohibits sitting or lying down upon the public-owned rightways, sidewalks, piers, docks, boardwalks, including public access boardwalks and other entryways or to exit ways from public-owned buildings located in the downtown core development, redevelopment zone, the Gateway Corridor and the Clearwater Beach Core Tourist Zone. We don't use this one any longer. We have used other ordinances to help with this. Section twenty-one point oh nine, prohibited acts on piers, bridges and seawalls is one of the ones we use now. Section twenty-one point one-one, unlawful lodging outdoors is another one we use and the disorderly conduct is another one that we use. Therefore, chapter twenty-one offense, offenses, section twenty-one point two is redundant, is no longer used by the Clearwater Police Department.
Questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Yeah, just a comment on that. I, I think I was on the Clearwater Downtown Development Board and we were just getting the trolley to come into downtown through up into Dunedin and Tarpon and that's when we found that it was very difficult for people coming downtown to see, I mean, they were homeless people like sleeping in the doorways of, of businesses and maybe, I'm not sure how long this has been in effect, but I think something went into effect then that said something about downtown, couldn't lay down on the sidewalk 'cause it was, really had a problem back then. Not so much now when there's people, got more people walking around, but.
Yeah, I can't unfortunately tell you how long it's been in there, but like I said, we use those other ordinance to address those chronic problems.
Yeah. Okay, anything else? Okay, next item, please, four point four.
Approved amendment to the Clearwater Code of Ordinances, repealing chapter twenty-one, offenses specifically section twenty-one point fifteen relating to the offense of requesting payment in exchange for watching parked motor vehicles.
Good morning, everyone. Michael Wallach, interim chief of police. Several months back, again, the Clearwater Police Department's command staff, along with the police department's legal advisor, Melissa Isbell, began a process of reviewing the Clearwater Code ordinances for items that were either outdated, no longer used or codified in other areas of enforcement. The item before you is an ordinance of the city of Clearwater repealing section twenty-one point one-five of the code ordinances related to the offense of requesting payment in exchange for watching parked vehicles. Section twenty-one, sorry, chapter twenty-one, section twenty-one point one-five of the Clearwater Code ordinances prohibits requesting payment in exchange for watching parked motor vehicles. Section twenty-one point one-five is no longer used by the Clearwater Police Department and should be repealed.
Any questions or comments? Yes.
Can you explain this one? Like, where was it? Called on me.
He did, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Like, explain how this was used or when it was used or?
The only thing I could find on this one, I, I've, I've been here since nineteen ninety-seven, this is dated back in nineteen ninety-three. I, I don't, I can't tell you because I've never used it, I've never heard of anyone using it. I can just assume someone's getting paid to watch parked cars. I really don't know. It's that old.
Yes, go ahead.
So, with the amphitheater opening up in the next month and parking being a challenge, there was some discussion about people with private lots just turning it into parking lots for, for specific events. This would hinder that? This?
This is not, this would not.
No?
Yes, sir.
So, it's probably back when we had parking meters, maybe, and maybe, maybe somebody was want, you know, now you park and you got it on your phone, how many minutes you got left?
Yeah, I actually did some research last night trying to find a clear definition of what it was and like I said, the only thing I could find was, it was dated back in nineteen ninety-three and I couldn't find, like I said, in my twenty-six years, I don't know of anybody that's ever used it.
It, it, for me, it goes back to when you used to go to a, a ballgame back in the sixties and ballparks were in the downtown area and you had people offering to watch and ballparks were in the downtown area, and you had people offering to watch your car if you parked it in a certain area and pay them five dollars. That's, that's the only thing I can think of as an example. Interesting. Anyway, anything else on this? Okay, thank you. Four point five, please.
Approved amendment to the Clearwater Code of Ordinances, repealing chapter thirty, Article six relating to cruising control.
Good morning, Michael Wallach, interim chief of police. Several months back, members of Clearwater Police Department's Command Staff along with the Police Department's Legal Advisor, Melissa Isbell, began a rigorous process of reviewing the Clearwater Code ordinances for items that were either outdated, no longer used, or codified in other areas of enforcement. This item before you is an ordinance of the City of Clearwater repealing chapter thirty, Article six of the code ordinances relating to cruising control. Chapter thirty, Article six of the Clearwater Code prohibits cruising. The Clearwater Police Department no longer utilizes or reinforces chapter thirty, Article six of the Clearwater Code ordinances relating to cruising, and it should be repealed. Cruising ordinances have faced considerable controversy across the United States. Citizens charged with cruising have challenged the ordinance on the grounds that they impose impermissible restrictions on their right to interstate travel in violation of amendments to U.S. Constitution, and also alleged it is targeting specific individuals. For that reason, it should be repealed. Answer any questions?
Questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Four point six, please.
Approved amendment to the Clearwater Code of Ordinances, amending chapter twenty-two, Articles one and two relating to adding a definition of electronic cigarette, prohibition of smoking and vaping on city-owned public parks and beaches.
Morning, Michael Wallach, interim chief of police. Florida Statute three eighty-six point two oh nine enacted and signed into law by the governor on June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, effective July first, twenty-two, July first, two thousand twenty-two, amended the Florida Clean Act, Chapter three eighty-six, Part two, Florida Statutes, to provide that counties and municipalities may restrict smoking within the boundaries of any public beaches and public parks the local government owns, with the exception of restrictions of smoking unfiltered cigars, which is granted to the state. Cigarette butts are one of the most commonly found items of litter on floor beaches. The litter caused by those who improperly dispose of cigarette butts or their tobacco products on the public beach or in public parks is difficult to remove from beaches. It can cause an interjection hazards to wildlife, can significantly detract from healthy environment, and reduce the enjoyment to the city's public beaches and parks for those individuals and families who want to enjoy a healthy environment free of smoking related to pollution hazards. The Florida Legislature made a staff analysis to amend to Chapter three eighty-six, Part two, noted that exposure to secondhand smoke can cause numerous health problems and has been causally linked to cancer and other potentially fatal diseases. The ordinance authorizes the Clearwater Police Department to issue a class for civil infraction to people smoking tobacco products except for unfiltered cigars within city parks and beaches. Our ordinance mirrors out of the City of St. Petersburg's, and this is geared toward being an educational campaign where we go out there and educate the public in the beaches, not to be a strict enforcement that will be taken if that rises to that level, but this is purely educational. I can take any questions.
So, are we going to put signs up saying smoking prohibited?
Correct.
Okay. We don't have them up right now, though, correct?
I understand that some part to do, but I don't know the extent, but I'll get Mr. Kader and make sure we have all the ones if it does go that way.
Yes, ma'am.
I think it would help for that educational and also, you know, having people agree to it, would have, to have maybe designated smoking areas. I think it would help the end product, you know?
Okay.
Instead of having, just putting it out there, people are going to smoke. There's nobody around, and what we don't want is those butts to be on the floor, so if they have a designated area, I think that would contribute to a positive result.
Okay. We also have the Police Department, too, working on an educational placard or card that we can hand out that gives the people answering the questions where they can and can't smoke, so that's something we're going to pass out, especially on the beach, so they're aware of that, for people that are not coming here or unfamiliar with the ordinance.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I'm concerned, as, you know, a member of the TDC, we have a lot of Europeans come, and a lot more Europeans smoke than do American citizens nowadays, and I don't want to cause problems if someone's on the beach. I understand the secondhand smoke, but maybe a designated smoking area as opposed to a complete ban, but I'd like to hear what the rest of the council says about that. So, anyway.
The question was a designated smoking area on the sand, on the beach?
No.
Or outside of the beach?
Firstly, I'm thinking outside, just outside. And it's not illegal to smoke, so we have to, I believe, if the whole ultimate goal is to eliminate butts from the floor and, or from the ground, a designated area will give that person an area to do it and dispose of it. This necessarily has to be on the sand, but, but close to the edge of the park. It's for compliance. We can't make it completely banned and, and not offer a solution for those who smoke.
Do you have any information on the county's discussion or voting on this?
I do not, unfortunately, I'm sorry.
I know they've talked about it in their Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
Like I said, I did, we did talk, our ordinance mirrors that of St. Pete's, so we had some consistency all the way across the board.
It's a, I'm sorry, it's a dicey issue. I mean, like Councilmember Sheriff said, it's not illegal, but I mean, I'm not a proponent of people smoking in public, I don't want to smell it, I don't want to be near it, but again, when you've got tourists coming and you're a world-class international destination, as Mr. Duck reminds me all the time on Clearwater Beach, it's dicey. I, we have to figure something out.
It is, but alcohol's illegal on the beach, too. They can go to a bar or restaurant and drink.
They can't go to a bar and restaurant and smoke. They can maybe go to a bar, they can't go to a restaurant and smoke, but.
That was, one of the driving factors behind our side is purely an educational component.
Okay.
It wasn't to go out there and give everybody a ticket for smoking, it's to slowly explain to them and educate everybody that this is unfortunately no longer allowed.
Okay. Any other comments on this? All right, thank you. Chief, stay up here for a second, and Chief Fire, Chief, you can come up for a second? If you would indulge me for a minute. Give us the Reader's Digest version of what you guys coordinated with the email we got from the guy Eddie about his aunt and uncle, just so everybody knows. Just a Reader's Digest quick version.
Yes, just a quick, there's a condo complex over in the northern portion of Clearwater where elderly couple, their elevators broke and they can't use the elevator, they live on the third floor. Chief Heller and I, Chief Heller and I actually went over there and worked it together and made contact with them and helped them establish connections with the Police Department and the Fire Department, also extending senior services to them. Two of the police officers went over there and helped them reestablish connection with their internet shop using Walmart instead of Instacart who was charging them for money. So, just using the resources we had to collaborate with the Fire Department and the Police Department, although we can't get the part for the elevator, we're going to do everything we can to help them get through this tough time.
Yes, Chief said, we've been doing everything we can and pulling our resources together to make sure, making sure that we cover every idea that we can. It's very difficult because there's not much we can do. You know, an elevator is a luxury. Under fire code, if there's something we could do, we could very well push that. The problem is, again, in any emergency, the elevator's not the place to use because the elevator's going to the first floor. So, really, it's the stairwells. If they didn't have a stairwell, different story. We've used that before, but we're going to do everything we can to try and make that a little bit more comfortable for them for the next, that's twenty weeks, I think it is.
And that's to get the part in, correct? I mean, you spoke to the property management people, and they're on top of it, but they can't get the part fixed. I guess, I'm sure it's an antiquated elevator.
Yeah, the elevator's, I believe, something like twenty years old and the part is sublong shafted, and they can't get.
Yeah, it's, and it has to be manufactured according to.
And you also looked into possibly relocating them, and that's something people are talking about, correct?
We did, we're working with that to see if there's something, there's a lower unit, but we're still working with that through the economy association.
Okay, well, I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, because it's the Going Above and Beyond outstanding work. I believe it was Lieutenant Miller and Sergeant Kaspar, Kaspar?
Sergeant Kaspar, being Corporal Miller, yes.
Corporal Miller, okay. Again, send them our appreciation. Yes, sir.
And just a couple of weeks ago, I went out for a ride-along with firefighters from Fire Station Forty-five, and one of the calls was helping an elderly woman out of bed into a wheelchair, and I was surprised that this is, this is something that people call them? Apparently, yeah, yeah. So, you know, and the people, the firefighters, were incredibly nice about the entire thing. It was a great time.
Anyway, job well done. Please send our congratulations to everybody, and keep up the good work, we appreciate it. Thank you. Public Works five point one, please.
Approved an increase to the purchase order to Central Florida Contractors for the two thousand twenty-one sidewalks project.
Morning, Council.
Morning.
How's it going, Public Works? The Public Works Department is now requesting an additional five hundred thousand dollars toward the one point five million dollar annual sidewalk construction contract for years three and four of the contract. This would set the amount to two million dollars for the next two years each. The next contract year starts this month, and approximately two point five million was used for sidewalk and curb repair from June of last year to May of this year, and I will take your questions.
Any questions or comments on this item? Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell me why the qualified census tracts are highlighted in this agenda item or the project? Do they get some special attention or different attention or funding, or?
Three hundred thousand dollars would be put back into the sidewalk repairs, which that's been used.
In those census tract areas?
In those areas.
Okay. And then, the bigger question, I think, is how much should we budget each year to stay ahead of sidewalk and curb construction and maintenance? We don't want to get a major backlog like we've had before.
Yes, sir.
So, as you're asking for an increase, which is great, and we had that huge ADA report, the huge dollar amount to the ADA report early this year, so how much money do you think you need to take care of our streets, or our sidewalks and curbs and all that stuff to stay on an even keel?
I couldn't tell you. We're still working on repairing the trip hazards that are existing right now.
Okay. Because as we enter the budget, I mean, I just, I think it'd be great if the department said, look, we need this amount to stay on top, to do our job, to keep things safe, and, and then, you know, we don't have a continuous ask, you know, unless there's something unexpected, but you need the money to do the job to take care of our sidewalks and curbs. So, what, what's that big ask?
Yes, good morning, Tara Kivett, City Engineer. We are in the process of looking at that. We still, there was a, the Tindall Oliver HR led study had a lot of data in it, so we're kind of still in the process of scrubbing that data, making sure, you know, a lot of it was something as simple as, not simple, but, you know, the detectable warning surface or the ADA map versus slope, things like that. So, that's going to take us a little while. I don't have a timeline for you yet, but we are looking at how much we will need for a true five-year plan. And then, the good news is, the last year or two, we have really ramped up actually spending the money that we have allocated for sidewalk. In the past, some of that was a little slow, just getting the work out there. It's a little more complicated than people think, of course, especially for resurfacing, because we want to make sure that before we go and mill and resurface a road, that we've addressed all the underground infrastructure. So, so we're taking a deeper dive to make sure we address your question. We'll get back to you.
All right. Thanks.
Anything else? Any more consent?
Yeah.
Thank you. Five point two, please.
Approved a purchase order to Kale America for the purchase of parking kiosks associated parking payment technology.
Good morning, Jeremy Oss, parking manager. The item before you seeks to add to our current existing parking kiosks. We currently have seventy-eight, and when this is done, we'll have sixteen more, a total of ninety-four. There's also the corresponding parking technology that goes with them. There's like a monthly service fee, if you will, that we pay for them. It's broken down in the quote and the item as far as, we're trying to get them so that they're all synced up to the same time, or old with our new, will all be synced up at the same time, so there's sixteen months for the one, twelve months for the other, to get them all in sync. In addition, the Calais, doing business with Flowbird, we've had them for a long time, they're right here in our backyard on Olberton Road, we've had a really good relationship with them. All of the hard items that we're paying for here are actually lower than the piggyback contract that we're piggybacking off of, they gave us a deal. I think it's good for them to have the neighbors in their backyard as their customers, so I think that's why we get that, that's why I'll be happy to answer any questions you have about this.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
Why are we sticking with kiosks instead of turning it all over to Park Mobile?
So, we've had a little bit of, and I guess we kind of knew that we would. Not everybody's happy with the mobile app. Some folks just, they don't want to put it on their cell phone, they want that old, we're doing multi-space, so it's not one meter to every spot, which is a step in the right direction, but we've had some complaints from folks about having to use their mobile phone, not having a smartphone, et cetera.
And believe it or not, I know people that don't even have a mobile phone. They do have a flip phone for emergencies, so.
Right. And we've made the mobile app, we've made it so that it will, you can just call a phone number, use the flip phone and do a transaction, but again, it's more time-consuming, and folks just want to be, and it was convenient for them.
Anything else? Yes, ma'am.
I think just, that was kind of my question, but just to be clear, so the Park Mobile can be used at any spot, and the kiosks are for some particular areas?
The, yes, Park Mobile can be used throughout the city at any city-owned space. The, the Calais, Flowbird machines will be able to use at the location where they're at.
Anything else? Consent? Thank you. Five point three, please.
Approved the sidewalk and public utility easement from property owner Clearwater Neighborhood Housing Services for the installation, repair, and maintenance affecting real property at twelve zero five Roosevelt Avenue.
Good morning, Mayor. City Council, Robert Casmer, Public Works Engineering, Real Estate Coordinator. For your consent review today, property owner Neighborhood Housing Services shall convey to the city sidewalk and public utility easement at twelve oh five Roosevelt Avenue here in Clearwater. Said easement supports segmentary requirements, sidewalk improvements, and places the existing fire hydrant within this easement. Any distributaries will be returned to the original condition. City staff has reviewed and approved this request. Thank you, and any questions?
Questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, consent? Thank you. Five point four, please.
Approved the aerial easement request by Duke Energy on behalf of HEP, Homeless Empowerment Program, to install, operate, maintain, and overhead crossing power lines supporting outdoor safety lighting at twelve sixty Engman Street.
Good morning, Mayor. City Council Member, Robert Casmer, Public Works Engineering, Real Estate Coordinator. For your consent review again, Duke Energy requests on behalf of HEP, Homeless Empowerment Program, an aerial power line easement to crossover city property at sixteen oh five Harbor Drive connecting to twelve sixty Engman Street to install security and playground lighting. The expected line length shall be one hundred ninety-five feet from an existing power pole on city property to the point of connection on HEP property. Said power line shall be placed at a mutually approved location with the easement sketch to be updated. Any distributaries will be returned to the original condition. City staff has reviewed and approved this request. Thank you, and any questions?
Questions or comments on this one? Anyone? Okay, consent? Thank you. Five point five, please.
Approved change of order four to Gibbs and Register for the construction of Cleveland Street Streetscape Phase Three.
I'm a Council Cat Corcoran, Senior Landscape Architect with Public Works. We are nearing completion for Cleveland Street Phase Three, and you can look forward to planting starting as soon as this week. It will open alongside Coachman Park, and as we got nearer to the completion of construction, we realized that the funds that were allocated were insufficient for the quantities of materials that were required. In addition, throughout the construction process, we've encountered situations where the plans as designed did not tie into the adjacent properties as we needed them to, so some adjustments were required, and the aligned items that were pre-existing in the original contract were retaining those competitively bid values, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions or comments on this item?
I'd just say, excited to hear that this is going to be complete, kind of tie in with the opening of Coachman Park as well.
It's really exciting.
It's really, really nice. Thank you.
Anyone else? Consent for this item? Thank you. Okay. Planning, six point one.
Provide direction on Clearwater twenty forty-five, Quality Places and Mobility Chapters. This will be a work session only.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jamie Lofco with Planning and Development. We're here to go and look at the update to our comprehensive plan, which is going to be a rewrite of the entirety of the plan. And so we're here to get your input on our first two chapters, Quality Places and Mobility. So just to give you a general background, the comp plan's a long-range policy document to guide decisions on the future growth and sustainability of the city. Clearwater's adopted comprehensive plans to guide growth and preservation of natural resources long before the state required it. But beginning in nineteen eighty-six, the state of Florida enacted laws requiring municipal governments to have a comprehensive plan for the purpose of growth management. So over time, laws envisioning the direction of the city of change, requiring the need for updates and amendments to the plan. And major updates occur usually every seven to ten years, but the city's plan was written, current plan was written in two thousand and eight. And we've done minor amendments since then, but at this point, we are doing a complete rewrite of the plan. And with that, we are also completely reformatting the document, going from eleven elements down to five chapters, to make it kind of an easier document to, to read with also less redundancy. So the process of rewriting our plan began, began in late twenty twenty with a detailed review of our current plan that led into public engagement activities. We have also hired consultant HDR to assist us with early engagements and the drafting of these first two chapters. And so we work to identify current community assets and concerns. We look to the, ask and share their thoughts on opportunities for improvements and discuss priorities for the future. And our public engagement involved over three hundred participants in both online and in-person activities. So we utilized the feedback from the public to develop the visit statement that's on the, the screen, and that's specific to the comprehensive plan. We also had some common themes that came up during the engagement, and those included promoting the cultural, social, and artistic vibrancy of the city, bringing new life to downtown, transportation's concerns like connectivity, safety, and public transit, balancing city policy emphasis between all areas of the city and not just focusing on downtown and Clearwater Beach. And all of these have been used to guide us in developing the new comprehensive plan for Clearwater twenty forty-five. So before we get into the first two chapters, I wanted to let you know a couple of things. First, the plan is formatted into goals, objectives, and policies for each chapter. So our goals are going to be high-level statements of what we want to achieve. Our objectives are going to set our direction towards achieving those goals, and then our policies are going to be our action steps to actually achieve those. So I'm going to cover the goals and their associated objectives and policies. And after each one of those, I'm going to pause, leaving options for comment, because there's a lot of information. And I also have staff here to assist with questions, as well as HDR to help with that. And the current plan that we have now was used as a guiding point. So we looked at what we have now in our goals, objectives, and policies, and pulled over what we thought was still relevant, updated what we could for current issues, and things that have already been accomplished were eliminated. This is a brand-new plan, so we're definitely here, we want to get your inputs, your, your comments, and your questions. But you will likely see the, the, the final document that comes before you will change quite substantially based on the information we received from you. We are constantly reviewing the documents, but the draft that you had before you was actually, was written six weeks ago. We wanted to have the same document available to the Community Development Board, to the City Council, and Environmental Advisory Board when we presented it. So staff has already been working on that document and making changes. So you will likely see additional information, changing around of the order of things. And of course, probably it will look quite different with an amount of pictures and graphics and introductions that we've added to them. And also, I wanted to note, there will be a final chapter, I guess you'd call it, for the end of the document called Plan Implementation. So you'll see that all of the annexation information, as well as intergovernmental coordination, is in that chapter. So things that you will likely see, working with the PSTA, or working with Pinellas County, working with Fort Pinellas on things, they won't be in these two chapters. They will be in the end in Plan Implementation. So if you have a question about that, those will come at a later date. All right, so let's get into our first chapter, which is Quality Places. This is going to provide guidance for the city leaders, staff, and public related to our land use, development, redevelopment, place character and preservation, neighborhood stability, housing affordability, and economic development. And we have goals, objectives, and policies for our existing future land use and housing elements. And we've also reformatted a little bit that if all of our information for Quality Places will start with a QP, all of our information for Mobility will start with an M, to kind of give us an idea of where these things came from. So goal number one deals with our land use and development in the city, and there are ten objectives that provide direction to support this goal. One point one, states a city should guide development by the future land use map and its categories, and there are five policies to support this objective. And some of those include establishing density and intensity standards for the city, ensuring we have an adequate number of future land use categories, and allowing for floating solar facilities in our stormwater or drainage ponds. One point two, as I get into the city's future land use map, that it should be reviewed and evaluated to ensure that it's consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, Community Development Code, as well as the countywide plan. There are eight policies to support this objective, and some of those are including limiting amendments that would create spot zoning, directing higher density or intensity uses to our multimodal or transit corridors, and ensuring that requested densities and intensities are compatible with surrounding neighborhoods. One point three gets into infill development and redevelopment being compatible with surrounding environment. There are six policies under this, and some of those are encouraging infill development and redevelopment of economically underutilized areas, facilitating the productive reuse of abandoned or underutilized properties or buildings, and requiring transitions between our higher density and intensity areas to surrounding residential neighborhoods. One point four is signage. This is, the city needs to have consistent sign regulations in our code and the objectives. This is being carried directly over from the current plan, and those are policies to support the implemented, the implementation of the city's current sign code. And policies under that include restricting commercial signs to discourage visual clutter and prohibiting billboards in certain areas. One point five is meeting landscape and tree protection standards in our code. There are seven policies under that, and some of those are protecting our trees during construction, citing development to reduce impacts to trees, promoting the use of native plants, and enhancing existing landscape medians throughout the city. One point six says the city prioritization of the creation of a sustainable tree canopy. There are three policies under this, which include preserving a shade tree canopy on private property by limiting removal and ensuring replacement of shade trees, supporting the retention of tree canopies over public rights of way, and from the city's Green Print two point O plan, conducting a survey of the city's tree canopy and setting a goal to increase that canopy coverage. One point seven details the requirements for hospitals located in the institutional, institutional future land use category. Now, this one is required to be in our plan by future, by Fort Pinellas, so it is being carried over exactly as it is, just with a little bit of change in the wording, to be more action-oriented. Instead of saying the city shall do X, Y, or Z, it's saying, consider do this, or provide these, or execute this. Indeed, that area covers, the hospital uses must have a master plan or site plan, what that master plan or site plan must include, and sets provisions for hospital uses that are contiguous to municipal, municipal boundary. One point eight is compliance with the city's code to maintain and, is maintained by our building and code enforcement activities. So we have four policies under that one, includes education on city standards, administering our Florida Building Code and permitting an affair in equitable manner, and administering Minimum Housing and Unsafe Structures Code. One point nine is supporting the recruitment, retention, and expansion of existing industries through economic development and creation of jobs and workforce training. We have eight policies under that, and some of those are establishing an economic development plan, encouraging the formation and growth of small businesses, supporting tourism opportunities in the city, and promoting and supporting workforce training grant programs. And lastly, one point ten is our American with Disabilities Act standards should be met on city-owned properties. So we have three policies under that, which are implementing the ADA guide to reduce noncompliant structures, ensuring public buildings are ADA compliant or incorporate renovations to bring them into compliance, and improving city facilities to ensure necessary needs are provided to the community. And so I'll pause there for questions on that section. It's a large one.
Questions? Comments? Anyone? No? Okay, thank you.
Okay, goal number two, and it's, this is a prop, when it comes straight over from the current plan, it's required by state law, it covers private property rights, and it will not be changed. So we're right into goal number three, which is covering the protection enhancement of the Courtney Campbell and Memorial Causeways, as well as city gateways and scenic corridors. And there are three objectives to provide direction to this goal. Three point one is the city should preserve the aesthetic and character of the Courtney Campbell Memorial Causeways. There are five policies to support that, including supporting the Florida Scenic Highway designation and maintaining the scenic views of the Courtney Campbell Causeway, maintaining the iconic native Florida landscaping of the Memorial Causeway, promoting education and partnerships to preserve natural and recreation features of the causeways, and continuing our litter cleanup programs along those causeways. Three point two is the city maintaining and preserving unique water views and gateways along identified corridors with a policy to consider developing corridor beautification projects. And lastly, three point three is preserving view corridors that provide a clear view of the water from a letting streets. There are two policies under that objective, and that's ensuring the corridors are not negatively impacted during our site review or other land use decisions, and preserving the public access to right-of-way ends that are protected by city charter. Any questions on that? Any questions?
Yes.
Okay, so three point two, preserve unique water views.
Yes, sir.
One of the things that I've always said that our causeway, and I know it's a DOT road, but it's, we, we have let the, which is grow so tall there, mangroves I'm talking about, that need special attention. And I understand now they're so tall, you can only cut a third of them, like, every year, so we'd probably have to have three or four years of cutting those things, get them down. It's like you can see any kind of water, but I don't know, is that something that's, that's, that's in this particular plan? Or is that because it's on a DOT road, we just shuffle it off to DOT?
There are some things that will be in the Plan Implementation to work with DOT in coordination with this roadway, but because it is their roadway, they can have a little bit more say-so in the decision on that than we do. But we do also have in our coastal and conservation management, things related to the protection of mangroves and referring to our, I believe it's the county that has regulations on the cutting of mangroves and how they can be pruned back.
Yeah. Okay. Well, maybe we could talk to the county or the state to help us out with that, you know, at least get them, getting them trimmed, because, I mean, they're, some of them are thirty feet tall, so. Anyway, just a comment, I guess.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if you have the answer to this, but there were a couple of projects that we've been working on that have been delayed because of the cost. One is the pedestrian overpass to make it safe there. And I, I think the cost of that was like a million dollars, and we sent it back to be redesigned. Is that correct? You know?
Which overpass?
On the causeway, there, we were...
Oh, you're talking about on the Courtney Campbell Causeway?
Right. Yeah.
Extension of the trail. No, that's underway. I mean, that's, I think that's, that's moving forward, but it's in the next year's plan, I think.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else right now? Okay.
All right. A goal four covers our art, culture, and historic preservation initiatives. There are two objectives under that goal. Four point one is the city should contribute and expand visual appeal and identity of the city through cultural art strategic plan. We have five policies to support that, and some of those are creating art projects and programs to shape the city's imaging, image, strengthen civic connectivity, and support neighborhood identity through programs like our Storm Drain or Signal Box programs, exploring a sister city's or artisan residence program, and continuing to implement our Clearwater Cultural Plan. Four point two is preservation of the authenticity of the built environment and celebrate historic places. We have six policies. Some of those are reviewing and updating the historic preservation provisions in our code, identifying local historic preservation opportunities, and increasing public awareness of the city's history and benefits of historic preservation. Any questions?
Questions? No? No?
All right. Goal number five covers the development of housing options to, to diversify housing to meet the evolving needs of the city of Clearwater. And there are five objectives to support the bright direction of this. Five point one covers the implementation of housing affordability initiatives in the city, and there are thirteen policies under this objective. Some of those include maintaining a sufficient amount of acreage of residentially zoned property of varying densities and locations, continue to provide density bonuses for affordable housing, considering amendments to our code to enable greater housing diversity and affordability, things like accessory dwelling units or missing, missing middle housing, and developing standards to allow affordable housing to be built on any parcel zoned for commercial and industrial use. Five point two gets into policies and strategies to address housing disinvestment or displacements. We have six policies under this objective, and some of those are identifying residential areas that are at risk of disinvestment, demolition, or redevelopment, and prepare programs to preserve them or replace them, create and expand programs to minimize displacement from loss of rental units due to demolition or conversion, and considering options to provide temporary relocation or counseling to enable rehabilitation of substandard housing. Five point three is the city should strengthen outreach partnerships, funding and capacity to deliver workforce or attainable housing, affordable housing. Six policies under this, this one, including expanding our outreach to low income, low income and housing insecure neighborhoods, partnering with public or private entities to explore funding and other financial tools to support workforce and affordable housing developments, promoting efforts to strengthen the capacity of not-for-profit entities with the potential to own, manage, or construct workforce and affordable housing, and continuing to provide assistance to qualified residents to retrofit housing to be accessible to households with special needs. Five point four is related to group homes, foster care facilities, and special needs housing subject to state requirements. This is being carried over directly as it is in the current plan. Staff is currently working with outside council on fair housing and sober homes, so we're going to hold off and make any changes to this section until we get that information. And five point five is the city should encourage the rehabilitation and preservation of existing housing stock through public and private resources. So we have four policies under this objective, and those include, a couple of those include using available funding opportunities for housing construction, rehabilitation, and preservation, and using collaborative code enforcement for housing to provide residents with information on rehabilitation assistance and additional time to bring their structures into compliance. Any questions on that?
Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Just had a question about, on the, on the previous slide, the Quality Places goal, we've got, and locations and provides an adequate supply of housing in stable neighborhood settings. So what's our definition of adequate? How do we know what adequate is, and when will we know that we have adequate housing?
It is, is a very subjective term, and it's one of those things where we are continuing to look at the wording of things, and I think we actually may have changed the wording of this one since it was written to make it less subjective, to more clear to us when we're looking at it, at a direction.
I just think it's, it'd be hard for anybody to...
Yes, ma'am.
To have adequate housing, and, and to even define it. And then, in stable neighborhood settings, what's a stable neighborhood setting?
Again, it's a very subjective term.
Same kind of thing, yeah. I mean, I, I just wonder, because we want adequate housing in all of our neighborhoods, and I don't know that I would say Clearwater has some unstable neighborhoods, you know. I think we have great neighborhoods with unique characteristics, and I'm sure you do too, but, so anyway, it was just like, well, what, what does that mean? And then the other thing was, and providing housing that meets the evolving needs of Clearwater households, that's fantastic. And as we look forward, what do we see as some of those evolving needs for, all the way through twenty forty-five? Like, what do experts predict? I would argue that some of the evolving needs would be to have EV charging in a home, because that's the future of, you know, automobile transportation, personal automobile transportation. But are there other kinds of things that you're looking at for all the way into twenty forty-five?
That's what we've looked at, possible bonus densities for affordable housing, looking at adding accessory dwelling units, or missing middle housing opportunities. EV charging will be covered in a different section, so it's not going to be specifically in, in housing, but we do have EV charging as...
But that's kind of an evolving need, isn't it? Wouldn't you think?
Yes.
That kind of thing? Okay. I didn't know what else might be an evolving need. Maybe the aging, you know, even more of our population and have, you know, ground units or more ADA things, or, you know, I don't know. I don't know what the projections are, but. And then, and then you had, you had a statement about, I think, housing displacement and rental units that are, you know, becoming scarcer due to demolition or conversion. The conversion relates to, like, big corporations buying up our, buying up homes and then renting them or using, having them for short-term rentals and things like that, or?
That, or buildings can be converted to condominiums and sold individually.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Anything else on this right now? All right, let's, yes, sir.
I'm sorry, just wanted to comment real briefly. Part of the Live Local Act, which was signed into law by the governor, makes some pretty, you know, major changes when it comes to affordable housing. Just, it's kind of, kind of a sweeping effect on a lot of different ways that cities and counties plan our housing in the future. I just want to make sure that planning is aware of this, and we'll work with, work with legal on that. But in short, for this purpose, what matters most is that we are now required going forward to allow... to allow affordable housing, and this is a little bit oversimplified, but to allow affordable housing anywhere where mixed use is allowed. And I think there's a little more nuance to it than that, but I just want to make sure Ms. Clayton and everyone's aware of that. That's kind of a new preemption, also affects height density and other aspects. So it'll be interesting, the first application, we get to put affordable housing on the beach. So we'll see how that, if that works out.
And this version was written prior to that being adopted, so it's not really in here at this point.
Right.
It is something we are aware of.
Just wanted to make sure everyone's aware of that because that'll, that'll probably shape some of this in Clearwater 2045.
Okay. Let's take a seven-minute recess and pick this back up, okay? Let's call the June 5th council session back to order and resume the presentation, please.
Okay. We'll move on to, this is still quality places, but there is something new that we're introducing. The current plan has what we call a design hierarchy in it that was our first step in protecting unique areas of the city. So the framework contained a new plan builds upon that and allows city council and others to focus on areas with certain design characteristics. And so this framework map was actually part of the preliminary framework plan that we presented to you in October of 2022. So I just wanted to touch on each of the components of this, and that will build on the next four goals that we go over for quality places. So neighborhoods are the foundation and building blocks of our city that offer a wide range of housing and lifestyle options to meet the needs of our residents. Our neighborhood centers are the small-scale neighborhood-serving commercial nodes, and then we have corridors that are main commercial corridors through the city. These are hubs for shopping, dining, and services to serve daily and weekly needs of nearby neighborhoods. Our mixed-use centers are all going to be located along US-19 with the exception of one that is near, around Morton Plant for Harrison. Those are our centers for living, working, and shopping. The centers bring new life and opportunity to former underutilized and mostly auto-oriented places. Activity centers are our downtown Clearwater and Clearwater Beach. They are our traditional centers of living, working, shopping, and entertainment. They are dense walkable areas that serve the city's primary economic engine. And we have the employment districts, and right now Hercules is our only employment district over by the Clearwater Air Park, and it's an additional center of our smaller-scale manufacturing, assembly, repairs, and other maker enterprises. And right now, while that's the only current employment district that we have, there is the new target employment study done by Forward Penellas that will be coming forward that will allow us to create additional ones if desired. All right, so goal number six is going to cover our activity centers, which is the downtown Clearwater and Clearwater Beach, and we have three objectives that provides to work to this goal. Number one is to continue to protect and enhance our waterfront uses that promote tourism and recreation. We have three policies, including investing in downtown and Clearwater Beach marinas to provide safe and efficient access, encouraging the preservation of recreation and commercial walking waterfronts, marinas, and other water-dependent facilities, and discouraging land use and zoning changes of recreational and commercial working waterfronts. 6.2 is promoting reinvestment and revitalization of downtown through the implementation of our Clearwater Downtown Redevelopment Plan and the application of our downtown district and development standards. There are seven policies under this objective, including continuing our tax increment finance program and redevelopment efforts in downtown through our CRA, activating streets and streetscapes to support local businesses through various CRA projects and programs, encouraging increased residential development to create a larger, more stable population base, and exploring integrated parking management and pricing strategies. And then 6.3 is using the beach by design, a preliminary design for Clearwater Beach and design guidelines, which we refer to as beach by design typically, to guide development, redevelopment, and placemaking on Clearwater Beach. We have five policies under this objective, and some of those are amending beach by design to guide developments and public investment, and continuing to track the allocation of units from our destiny, destination, resort density pool, and the hotel density reserve. Any questions on that line?
Any questions, comments? Yes.
I had a question about the map, the framework with the colored circles, and so the purple for the Hercules Employment District, is that, that's just for light manufacturing?
It's meant to target light manufacturing, but under the new study that Forward Penellas is doing, it will also allow accessory, things that are accessory to that offices and retail that can support those.
Why wouldn't we have an employment district, I mean, and again, up by Morton Plant with all those jobs that the hospital brings in, that there's purple there as well?
I'm not sure that the hospital itself is what they're looking at. I mean, they have four different classifications in the target employment that they're looking at, and it's there are some that are suburban, some that are urban, some that are more industrial. And it's more that they're trying to attract more business, it's not just look at the one that is there, but they have, in the new study, looked at US-19 as well as downtown as possibly creating target employment centers.
Okay. And then along that line, like a target employment center, I would think, you know, if we're looking to 2045, the countryside mall area might be one as well, right? I mean, a countryside mall...
That is the intersection that they identified in the plan.
Is it, is it that red one right there? I didn't...
It's not going to be on this diagram. It's the Forward Penellas study, the Target Employment Industrial Land Survey. They just are going through that right now to be adopted at their level, and then it's something that we will then have the opportunity to create another employment center, and the intersection of the countryside mall is the one that they've identified, as well as downtown is the other.
So what's the reason it's not on this one now?
It's not been created, allowed as being identified as an adopted thing that we can do yet.
Go through them for...
Yes.
Okay, great. And then just, I mean, one, yeah, so this isn't, if I ask for a printout, a large printout of this one, this one isn't near finalized yet, we need, in what stage is it in with Forward Penellas or other planning agencies in order to be able to put it on our map or in our 2045 plan?
It would have to be adopted before we were able to move forward doing something. And we do anticipate bringing changes to you in 2024 to the plan, even after it's adopted, because we have the Parks and Recreation Master Plan that's being done that's going to impact it, as well as this target employment study that's going to impact it. So there are several things coming down the pike that we will have to do updates next year.
Great. Thanks.
Anything else? Okay.
Okay. Goal number seven is our corridors and mixed use and neighborhood centers. We have three objectives for this goal. 7.1 is identifying areas appropriate for and support infill development and redevelopment, corridors, and mixed use and neighborhood centers. We have six policies. Some of those are supporting the adoption and utilization of future land use categories in the countywide plan to promote infill development and redevelopment along investment corridors, promoting high-quality design and initiating corridor planning to identify opportunities for conservation, redevelopment, and reinvestment along those corridors, and inventorying vacant land, identifying target areas for mixed-use development options. 7.2 is continuing to support redevelopment along US-19 corridor for the implementation of our US-19 redevelopment plan and application of the US-19 district and development standards. Three policies under this objective to review the plan and make sure, ensure provisions encourage transit-supportive and walkable forms of development, excuse me, continuing to market preferred sites within the corridor that have the greatest potential for employment-intensive or mixed uses. And then 7.3 is preserving the existing and planned character and development in neighborhood centers and corridors. This is nine policies under this objective. Some of those are utilizing the county plans, scenic and non-seenic corridors to limit some of, to limit amendments to incompatible future land use category designations. We want to preserve our limited large lot residential character in some of our neighborhoods that are designated as residential estate and residential suburban, and amend our code to establish minimum lot sizes, larger setbacks, and development techniques like cluster development for zoning districts consistent with our residential estate and residential suburban future land use categories. Any questions there?
Questions?
All right. Goal number eight gets into our industrial lands and uses in our Hercules Employment District and areas identified in the Target Employment and Industrial Land Study. That was done by Forward Penellas, so we have two objectives to support this goal. And the first one is to update the comprehensive plan to be consistent with the countywide rules based on the accepted TO study, which is a Target Employment and Industrial Land Study. We have two policies under this, and that is mapping our target employment center overlays and establishing standards to protect and preserve these areas, and supporting investments in infrastructure, mixed use, and employment-intensive uses. 8.2 is establishing policies and programs ensuring the continued viability of the small-scale manufacturing, assembly, and related uses. And the two policies under those are continuing to limit retail and office development except for small-scale supportive uses that are directly serve the primary land industrial functions, and assure adequate buffering and transitions to exist, to minimize offsite impacts to surrounding neighborhoods. Any questions?
Okay.
I just had a comment about the Hercules Employment District and the areas identified in the Target Employment Industrial Land Study. So we know that residents are sensitive to the landings and having that repurposed in any way for manufacturing or office or anything. And it's my understanding that that can't happen unless there's a referendum to change the distinction, right, to recreational, from recreational open spaces?
Yes.
Okay. So there's no need to put anything in here about that land being protected because it is protected?
Yes.
Except for a voter referendum?
Yes. I believe in the Parks and Recreation, there is a policy in there about retaining that any recreational open space cannot be changed without a referendum.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. So number nine, our last goal, quality places, covers sustaining and improving our neighborhoods, and there are three objectives in this one. 9.1 is ensure programs and investments are designed to support the long-term reliability, sustainability, attractiveness, and safety of existing neighborhoods. Seven policies under this one, some of those are mixed use and expansion of our existing neighborhood-focused programs, services, and initiatives, incorporating public health and safety considerations in neighborhood planning, prioritizing neighborhood planning and placemaking to support stabilization and revitalization of over and under-resourced neighborhoods, and developing and tracking measures of stability to identify places at risk of disinvestment or declining quality of life. 9.2 is guiding development and public investment in neighborhoods to preserve community character and promote strategic infill and redevelopment and public realm improvements. Seven policies under this one, and some of those are evaluating our code to promote compact and walkable forms of mixed-use housing, encouraging neighborhood services and amenities and locations planned for increased housing density, and encouraging the creation of walkable, livable neighborhoods on Drew Street from Myrtle to Old Poachman. Then 9.3 is the city should support the vision of the North Greenwood area through the implementation of the North Greenwood Community Redevelopment Area Plan. We have five policies under this one, and some of those are continuing to support the tax increment financing program and redevelopment efforts through the CRA, working to retain the existing neighborhood character and evaluating the creation of form-based standards or amendments to our code, and utilizing the findings of our North Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue corridor design charrette to determine if amendments to the code are needed to facilitate the redevelopment along the North Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue corridor. Questions?
Questions?
All right. Now we'll move into our mobility chapter, which guides improving the performance of our roadway network, increasing travel safety and destination accessibility, promoting walking, biking, and transit use as a safe and convenient alternative to driving, and improving connections to local and regional employment centers. The goals, objectives, and policies from our current transportation element, as well as some from our future land use and recreational open space elements in forms of the current draft. So the first goal is going to cover the city's transportation network. There are six objectives in this to provide directions to support goal number one. So 1.1 states the city should maintain an acceptable transportation network performance while developing a multimodal transportation system that improves mobility and safety for all users. We have 15 policies under this objective. Some of those include implementation of a mobility management system to generate funding for multimodal mobility improvements, analyzing impacts of roadway design on our ability to evacuate populations during emergencies, monitoring seasonal changes in our travel demand and traffic patterns, and expanding alternative transportation strategies to address seasonal congestion, supporting education and outreach for safe travel behavior, and increase public awareness of alternate forms of transportation, and then studying the effects of micro-mobility in the city. 1.2 is considering the equity of all users in our transportation network. We have seven policies under this objective. Some of those are considering conducting a needs assessment of our, to inventory our mobility needs of the city, continuing to fund the upgrades to our sidewalks and right-of-way signage to meet ADA requirements, supporting the creation of expanded transportation service options to service traditionally vulnerable populations, and develop strategies to connect underserved neighborhoods and populations to adjacent trail networks. 1.3 is research developed into technological applications and projects to support connected vehicles, enhanced mobility, and safety. Five policies under this one, and some of those are utilizing our 5G to expand the city's fiber network for enhanced traffic and parking management. Consuming standards for aerial and other autonomous delivery methods, and evaluating implementing integrated parking management systems and pricing. One point four is continuing to plan and implement improvements to the transportation system recommended by our Green Print 2.0. Some of those policies under there are supporting improvements to increase the use of transit, walking, and cycling, reducing greenhouse gas emissions of the city's vehicle fleet, expanding publicly accessible electric vehicle charging infrastructure, and establishing requirements for EV charging infrastructure in new development and redevelopment. One point five is establishing safety as the number one priority and commit to a Vision Zero approach. Nine policies under this, some of those are identifying our crash hotspots and assessing the feasibility of safety countermeasures to improvement projects. Considering a safe access school program, and continuing to provide access to residential, commercial, and recreational areas by providing trails and continuous sidewalks between destinations. And one point six is ensuring our code provisions promote travel safety and support multimodal mobility. Three policies under this objective, and that includes reviewing and updating our code to address multimodal and new forms of transportation, like e-bikes, scooters, or electric vehicles, and exploring the feasibility of permitting a low-speed, non-motorized vehicle like a golf cart to operate on city roads.
Questions or comments on this one?
So it looks like our mobility goal, so we've got, provide a safe, convenient, smart, efficient, interconnected transportation system that balances the needs of all users and promotes mode shift from single occupancy vehicles to walking, biking, transit, et cetera. So with that statement, as well as your last comment on quality places with a specific reference to Drew Street, you know, does our mobility goal, the goal that we have that you've just gone through, those different descriptors, match with the goals of the Drew Street improvements that we are going to be discussing later?
And there is a, one of the future goals that deals specifically with complete streets, and so that would be where Drew would be covered, but this is kind of more generalized of the entirety of the city, looking at its safety and efficiency of our transportation system.
Okay, and then our Green Print 2.0 and Vision Zero to also tie into the goals of?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on this? Go ahead.
Okay, goal number two is the expansion of transportation alternatives to lessen dependence on single occupancy vehicle trips. So we have eight objectives to provide direction to support this goal. Two point one is designing future improvements to our transportation corridors to support multimodal mobility, placemaking, land use, and economic development. We have five policies under this objective, including establishing and implementing priority recommendations from Complete Streets for Clearwater Implementation Plan, considering pilot or quick build projects on roadways to analyze operational effects of Complete Street techniques, and establishing Complete Streets design standards in our community development code. Two point two is the city should encourage and incentivize investments that support increased levels of internal trip capture, reduce vehicle trips and miles traveled, and promote walking and biking as an alternative to driving. There are nine policies under this objective, and some of those are prioritizing our capital improvements to support walking, biking, and micro-mobility. Promoting education and awareness programs to ensure physical safety of non-motorized transportation users, prioritizing pedestrian safety alongside walks and crosswalks, considering opportunities to improve city-owned portion of the Pennellis Trail through downtown to increase usage, and continuing to explore options to expand the operational hours of the Pennellis Trail. And two point three is supporting the development of a frequent, high-quality, and reliable transportation network. There are seven policies under this, and some of those include prioritizing capital investment that supports transit use and improves transit stop accessibility, continuing to explore surface, aerial, and waterborne transit opportunities to increase mobility options, working with developers, PSTA, or other partners to determine best locations for park and ride services, and developing code management solutions to address impacts of ride share services.
Questions on this one? Okay, next please.
All right, number three. This covers the safe and efficient operation of our Clearwater Air Park. It has one objective, and that's the city should support the long-range planning for maintenance improvement and possible expansion of the Clearwater Air Park. There are three policies under this objective, and those are continuing the implementation of our 2020 airport master plan, completing an update to that master plan by 2040, and reviewing proposed developments to ensure they do not conflict with the airport master plan. Questions? All right, last one. Goal number four is the safe and efficient movement of and delivery of goods throughout the city. Again, one objective, the city should ensure delivery service access is considered when planning to serve redevelopment and redevelopment. Three policies under this one, including ensuring the code standards address safety and functionality for delivery services, evaluating existing and proposed truck routes to ensure safe and efficient movements while protecting neighborhoods, and evaluating potential areas for on-street loading or delivery zones on Clearwater Beach or in downtown Clearwater.
Any questions? Yes, Dave? Yes, sir.
Okay, because I have to go to the beach, I travel the beach a lot, and I understand that most delivery people want to go to the beach early because of the traffic, but a lot of them come in the afternoon and always block off one lane of Mandalay. I'd like to see something, and I understand restaurants need to function, but I don't know if it's something we can do or where we could say, hey, take your deliveries before 11 o'clock or something like that. I mean, because it really does, especially when the traffic gets very, you know, in the afternoon when it starts to build up. I mean, that's really, I mean, they take up one lane almost exclusively on Mandalay. Is that something we're going to put in like an ordinance, or how are we handling that?
The complaint is going to give you some guidance, and should we go down the road of wanting to actually create that, this would be the support for creating an ordinance too.
Okay, I see.
I see that too on Coronado, I mean, frequently, especially with the building of the new hotels. I mean, there's no, there's no spare lane, it's just two lanes. I worry about when traffic gets built up and an emergency vehicle needs to get through, how do they do that, let alone loading and unloading of goods? But it was my understanding there are some parameters of when delivery trucks can take up a lane, but I could be wrong. I thought I talked with a couple of merchants who are down on the beach, who said they're supposed to be here like before 11:00 AM or something.
Yeah.
But I don't know how well it's enforced or how practical it is, but it definitely is, impacts, I, you know, it's certainly inconvenient, but I worry about safety and accessibility if somebody's having an emergency in that area. How is, how are responders going to get there?
Okay, anything else?
All right, and just to wrap up, the full draft of the plan will be presented at two public meetings coming up on June 27th at the North Greenwood Rec Center and June 29th at the Countryside Library. We'll get the plan posted online, so the public will be given an opportunity to review the entire document and comment on any part of the plan. The Community Development Board has the opportunity to review all five of the chapters at meetings on May 10th and 16th and provide comments to staff. We also presented our Coastal Conservation Management Chapter, as well as any state and local resiliency or environmental-related goals to our Environment Advisory Board on May 17th, for them to comment as well. The intent is to bring forward the entire plan for public hearing presentation to the Community Development Board on August the 15th for the recommendation to City Council. The City Council will then have the opportunity to comment on our Conservation and Cultural Management, Parks and Public Places, and Support Services, where we bring that to your June 12th work session for you to comment on those chapters. And we anticipate the first public hearing before Council to be September the 21st. After the first public hearing, we then have to send the plan to the state for their review. They have a 30-day review period where they can make comments back to us. And at that point, we will then have, the council staff will then have to address those comments before bringing it to Council for second reading. When we initially put this together, we anticipated that was going to be December the 7th at the earliest. At this point, it's probably going to be December 19th at the earliest, but depending on the scale of the comments, it may actually get pushed into 2024 to give us a lot of time to address the comments, since it is a full rewrite of the plan, we're not quite sure the level of comments we're going to get from the state. And then all five chapters are right now on our Clearwater 2045 website at clearwater2045.com, and we continue to update that when we have new versions available and push out social media and blasts and things like that to try and generate some interest in public comments. That's all I have. Is there any more comments?
Thank you, any other questions or comments at this point?
There's, there was a, early in your PowerPoint, there's a slide that has future land use maps and categories. Is there any way we can get a copy? That's static, I mean, that's not going to change much?
The map itself?
Yeah, the map with all those colors on it.
Yes, that will be adopted as part of the plan, and it is not necessarily a static document, it is static when it is adopted, but we will bring forward amendments to you that will then change that map.
Okay, all right. I'd like a large copy of that to just, you know, I'll, I'll try to get it somewhere. But yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's move to Information Technology, seven point one.
Authorize a purchase order to CWG for backup devices, software, and maintenance.
Mayor, Council, Dan Mayer, IT Director. This is for the upgrade of our current backup system. It's a product called Commvault, and we have several devices that are end of life or not being maintained, so we're buying a new device that will cover all the backup needs for our growing database.
Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, consent? David, sorry, I didn't see you.
Well, I can wait till after the next one, but seems like it's the same company, CDWG?
CDWG is the distributor company, so the product we use is called Commvault.
Oh, I see, okay.
Some of the companies only go through distributors, they don't sell direct, and then they have an approved list. Most of them put this off of large state contracts. So.
Yeah, I know it's a piggyback on another cooperative purchasing thing, but both, both seven one and seven two combined is like $700,000, and I was wondering if one was software, one was hardware, or I couldn't?
They're a combination. So the backup devices are both hardware and software. So the hardware devices are proprietary in a sense, and they're designed by this company, and they have a software component to create a console for management of those devices. They provide everything from encryption to immutable storage, meaning the storage cannot be changed or modified, the data can't when it's in storage. It's pretty specific, we've been using this product for about a part of 10 years, so we would, this is standardized in terms of our environment.
So you think it just will last another 10 years?
Well, we hope, we moved to the cloud with Office 365 in 2019, and since then, our data stores have more than doubled. Our addition of Munis for Finance, the protocols have changed, we now scan all images into the system, so that has increased our storage. We're doing 85% of our permitting with scanned images of all the plans and all the permit requirements and online. We've moved increasingly online, and the amount of data we generate and store and have to maintain is enormous. We will be, in five years, we'll be over, we'll be in the petabyte range, multiple petabytes, which is gigabyte, terabyte. It is difficult to explain the abstraction of how much data we're talking about. It's trying to explain a million to your child. It's incomprehensible for them, they have no reference point, and our data stores are becoming like that, and that's just standard operating procedure. We are small compared to the county, some of the larger entities, but the amount of data we generate electronically and have the obligation to maintain and protect is large.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, consent on this? Thank you, seven point two, please.
Authorize a purchase order to CWG for storage devices and, for storage devices.
So the, the storage of this data is on these devices, and then we back up from these devices, both offsite and to other locations. So that's called having distributed coverage, or we move the data around so it isn't one spot, we try not to create a single target. And some of that is both within our network, but within multiple buildings on our network, and then at locations off of our network, including the internet at a remote data site outstate. So this protects our data in the case of catastrophic loss of facilities. We would be able to reconstitute these systems and the data stores is the plan. So again, this data, we are, just for, for measures, we're using 80% of our 30 terabytes of storage existing. This will upgrade us to close to 100 terabytes. We expect to use about 30% of that. At the rate of growth, this should last us five to six years. TBD.
Okay, anyone else? Consent? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marine and Aviation, eight point one.
Approve a second amendment and second extension to the water taxi services contract with Clearwater Ferry Services.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Eric Andy, Marine and Aviation Director. So what you have before you is a fully executable agreement and extension that Mr. Mark Olvis and I have worked on for a couple of months. Unfortunately, we've had some developments that require us to postpone discussion on this item, simply because we had a meeting with Forward-Pennellis Waterborne Transportation and had some engagement with the city of Dunedin that will require Mrs. Rodriguez to engage with them and city staff to engage with them to see if there's a potential for a more comprehensive waterborne transportation plan and potentially a bilateral agreement with Dunedin. We're just not sure, because this all transpired at the end of last week after the item was already published. So I'm just asking to postpone it to a future work session, and we can have that discussion once we've had the opportunity to have some meetings with the involved parties.
Any questions? Or scan, comments? Okay, thank you. Public Utilities, nine point one, please.
Approve a purchase order to Andret separation for centrifuge, belt filter, press, and appropriate sludge dewatering equipment.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Rich Governor, Director, Public Utilities. The item before you today is the authorization of a purchase order for a sole source contract for Andret separation for the centrifuge and belt press parts and service. The equipment is used to dewater wastewater treatment sludge, reducing the volume that needs to be transported and disposed of. Andret is the original manufacturer of this equipment and is a sole source for parts and service. Purchase order before you is for the amount of $300,000. This is a one-year contract from June 6, 2023, through June 5, 2024, with the option for two one-year renewals. I'm asking for you to authorize a purchase order and happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments on this item? Consent? Thank you. City Clerk?
Appoint an individual to the Public Art and Design Board to fill the remainder of an unexpired term through February 28, 2026. Council members, in your agenda pack, you had applications from Matthew Estes, Sharon Reed Kane, and Brian Volotan. The current individual, Teresa Brombozen, was serving through her first term and has resigned, so that is the vacancy that we are trying to fill right now.
Okay, what's your pleasure? Anyone know these individuals?
I do.
Okay.
I, I know a few, I certainly, Dr. Sharon Reed Kane is an impressive individual in our community and does a ton with arts and education. I also know Brian Volotan, who is from the North Greenwood community. I think he's a grant recipient with our, our grants, and I think it would be great to have someone from that community sit on the, on the Public Art and Design Board as the CRA comes to life, so.
I agree with that, yeah.
Okay.
So you're saying Brian?
I looked at his website yesterday, and I liked his art, and I would choose him. Okay. All right.
Is there consent, is to place it on consent?
Yes, on consent, please. Okay, thank you. City Attorney?
Mayor, 11.1, 11.3 are my items. 11.1 is a reference to our pending land exchange with PSTA. As the Council knows, we are under a contract with PSTA for us to convey the parcel of the northwest corner of Court and Myrtle, and in return to acquire the current bus terminal that PSTA is using for the purpose of PSTA constructing their new intermodal center. Throughout the real estate due diligence period, both parties have been investigating the environmental status of each of those sites. As each of you know, through our one-on-one discussions, there are environmental issues discovered on both sites. The parties, which is primarily me and PSTA's attorney, have determined that it's best to extend the closing. From P S T A's standpoint, they don't want to close on the real estate until they know with certainty that they're not going to have to do any remediation on the Court and Myrtle site. Based on what we know right now, we don't think they will have to do that because the usage, you know, is not residential. The contamination found on the Court and Myrtle site is moderate. It does not appear to be anything that is going to foreclose or prevent the intermodal center from being built. However, P S T A does not want to take any chances, and so they are doing additional soil borings at the Court and Myrtle sites that they don't have any unexpected costs or unexpected expenses come up later. I think that's sensible, can't really argue with that, especially because we are looking to do the same thing on the old bus terminal site. On the old bus terminal site, it's actually a little bit more complicated. As the council knows, there has been discussion about potentially putting a residential component on that site because it is in the heart of downtown. That's fine, except for the fact that the current level of environmental contamination on the old bus terminal site would currently preclude residential development. Now, there are a lot of ways this can be dealt with. It can be dealt with through site rehabilitation, it can be dealt with through engineering controls. We may be able, for example, to put parking on the ground floor and retail on the ground floor, and then build the residential higher up. So, there's a lot of ways you can deal with things like this. I don't think any of them are fatal to the deal. I don't think any of them are fatal to us even building residential on that site. However, it is an issue that we have to deal with. So, the plan is for Stantec, which is our vendor, to perform additional soil borings on the old bus terminal site, which is currently in progress, and they will be hopefully giving us a report relatively soon. I see Ms. Kivitz here in the back. They'll be giving us a report relatively soon, which will include, among other things, cost estimates and options for how we might be able to rehabilitate. Now, as the council knows, as we've discussed through one-on-one meetings, I have let P S T, P S T A know that our ask of them is that they will be responsible for the rehabilitation of that site, or to give us a credit that we could apply toward the rehabilitation. In my opinion, that's very reasonable because the site that we're acquiring is one where we have a potential use of residential, and we want to acquire it in a condition that is suitable for our use. Now, P S T A did respond, and they said to me, well, what about the Court and Myrtle site? And they said, if there's rehabilitation there, is the city going to pay to rehabilitate that site? And my answer is that maybe we would, and maybe we would discuss that if it's necessary. But for the site that P S T A is acquiring, it does not appear right now that there's going to be any needed environmental remediation. It just so happens that because our usage is potentially residential, or at least you want to preserve the option for residential, that we need a cleaner site than what they need for their usage. So, that's been the discussion I've had with them to date. There was really no, like, no strong pushback, I would say, from them. I was on the call with their attorney and with also Brad Miller, their CEO. The only concern that, that P S T A expressed is that they don't want to be writing a blank check. I can certainly understand that they don't want to be on the hook for an unlimited rehabilitation project. I sympathize with that. I don't want to either, especially in the government context. So, what we've started discussing is a fixed dollar credit. We don't know what the dollar amount that's going to be, but likely I'll be asking the city, asking P S T A to give the city a fixed amount so that we will know upfront that P S T A will give us X amount of dollars that we can put toward any sort of remediation that's necessary. And that seems like the basic framework of a deal that I think will be acceptable to everyone. But we won't know for sure until they get their environmental report back on the Court and Myrtle site to give them the 100% assurance that there's no remediation needed on that site, and then we will get the cost estimates from Stantec so that we know total what it would look like as far as whether remediation is required. As I said, there, there may be more creative options here. You know, P S T A's attorney and I will work closely with F D E P on this, so I'm optimistic that we're going to get through it and it's going to be fine. It's just going to take a little bit of work along the way.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
Okay, so we've all had one-on-ones about this, and my ask was to give me a recommendation. The difference with the two sites is P S T A knows what they're going to build on their site. We don't know what we're really going to build on ours. We assume that the highest and best use would be residential. But even if we do residential, there are requirements through city code that we have to have an active bottom floor, and we'll have to have parking somewhere, so that will probably be a couple of floors of parking. Whether the city does that, or it's a P three, or if it's a private developer, that's the way it's going to have to go down. So, what I'd like to know after we do get the borings back, the second borings, what, what are our options? Because P S T A is going to want to know too, are you, if you have to build, if you're going to think about building residential, really, how's that going to look? It's not going to be residential on the first floor, I can pretty much guarantee that. It'll be up to some, some amount of floors with things that we have to have by code in there, but I want to know what, how many floors we have to have before it's going to be good. And that's all I ask, is, is, you know, we get, and all of us should have probably one-on-ones on that if we don't talk about it on the buy, on the dais in, in the interim.
Yeah, absolutely. So, Stantec will be providing us with the cost estimates. I don't know if Ms. Kivitz has anything from Stantec, you know, yet, but I know it's going to take a little while. Once we get that report from Stantec, that will give us the information that Mr. Zemett and I need to speak with F D E P to see what will be acceptable to F D E P, and to see if we can come up with a more cost-effective alternative to whatever Stantec is offering. So, I know, so when Stantec gives us those final borings, they will give us a number that says this is what it would cost to totally remediate the site, to totally rehabilitate if you wanted a pristine site. So, we'll know that that's one option available, but the plan is to speak with F D E P and see what alternatives they will allow, so that way the council and P S T A, to Councilmember Albritt's point, have some options so that we know option A is going to be remediating the entire site, and this is what it would cost, and then option B or option C could be, well, maybe we don't have to rehabilitate the site, or we don't need to fully rehabilitate it. We may be able to say, put residential on fourth floor or higher, and maybe that's good enough. Or they may say that if we only replace the topsoil, you know, that may be good enough because, because so far, we're not seeing any groundwater contamination, so that's good. If there was groundwater contamination, this would be a much scarier and a much harder thing to deal with. So, I'm optimistic we're going to get through it, and yes, so we'll be presenting options as soon as we have them available.
Anything else? Okay, consent? Thank you. Eleven point two, please.
Eleven point two, also my item. As the council is aware, this is an item to make revisions to our pension plan based on conversations with the city manager. As far as our police chief and fire chief are concerned, like many cities, our current pension plan says that if you are a police officer or firefighter and you retire from the agency, and then you come back to the same agency later, your retirement payments or retirement benefits are suspended. You can only get your retirement benefits while you're no longer employed with the police department or with the fire department. That creates a recruiting and hiring challenge, particularly when it comes to your executive roles of police chief and fire chief. Having the ability to have a police chief or fire chief retiree come back into that department can be beneficial, not just in our current situation, but also in the future when it's necessary to fill executive roles. So, this change, as proposed, would allow a potential police chief or fire chief who gets appointed as the police chief or fire chief to continue drawing or continue receiving their retirement benefits if they had previously retired from the same Clearwater Police Department or same Clearwater Fire Department. This has been cleared through IRS. IRS rules on this have changed a lot over the years. IRS used to be very strict when it came to this sort of in-service distribution, but we have confirmed with outside council that IRS will allow this. So, happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Yes, sir.
One quick one. Why, I understood that this was a change that, in the pension plan, not too long ago. Was that because of a, something from the state or federal level, or why did that happen?
Yeah, there were a couple of issues. Part of it is because of, you know, IRS. I mean, IRS used to be very strict on what they called an in-service distribution. An in-service distribution is when you have someone who is retired from an agency, and it's not, not always a police department or fire department, but tends to be, but they're retired from some sort of public service role, and then they come back into that role later on, and then they still draw their retirement benefits. IRS used to take the position that you're not really retired in that situation because you're still a working, a working stiff. And so, because of that, IRS used to say, wait a minute, we're not going to let you draw retirement benefits if you're actually working for the same employer who employed you before. IRS since then has liberalized those rules, and so they've become a lot more flexible in terms of the retirement aspect of it. So, that's, that's been a big part of it. I also remember during the Great Recession, a lot of the state retirement system, which is the Florida Retirement System, also known as F R S, had gotten pretty strict on this, as had a lot of other cities. I think it was more during those years about some of the public optics as well of someone getting paid while they were still working.
Double dipping.
The double, right, the double dipping criticism. I will say that for my part, I'm totally comfortable with this because it's actually revenue neutral for the city, right? Because the reality is, if you have someone who's retired from our police department or fire department, you're going to pay them their retirement benefits no matter what. Whatever they've earned is whatever they've earned, you're going to pay that for the rest of their life, no matter what they do with their future role. And then conversely, you're going to have to pay a police chief or a fire chief no matter what. You're going to pay them the same amount of money, whether it's a retiree who comes back, or whether you hire from the outside. And so, you're actually spending the same amount of taxpayer dollars no matter what. So, I'll say that for my part, I'm totally comfortable with this, especially now that IRS has been, has taken a more flexible view than they used to.
Okay, anything else on this one? Okay, thank you. Next item.
Eleven point three. As the council knows, so we've been discussing changing our work session times, so this will be the final work session in the morning. If council would still like to move them to the afternoons, the plan is to have work sessions at 1:30 PM. The CRA, I believe, will be noticed as if for 1 o'clock. Yep, for 1 o'clock, the CRA meetings will be noticed, so we will be moving to the afternoon if that's still the direction the council would like to go.
Okay, so 1:30?
1:30 is for work sessions. On those times when we have a CRA meeting, it'll be noticed for 1 o'clock, and if it runs long, that's fine. But CRA meetings will start at 1:00. If there's no CRA meeting, it starts at 1:30 for work session.
Okay, I thought we discussed 6:30 PM.
I, you know, I serve the council's pleasure. If the council wants to do a 9:30 PM meeting, it'd be fine with me.
Any questions on this? Okay, thank you. City Manager verbal reports.
Good morning. It is still morning. I just wanted to provide a brief update as it relates to recycling program. So, we are continuing to negotiate with the two vendors for our single stream recycling, and we are still on set to be able to bring that forward to council, probably at the second meeting in July. Should that change, we will certainly let you know. And simultaneously, I know I just mentioned that council wanted to bring back the conversation as it relates to credits, so those items will happen at the same time and hopefully in that second meeting in July. I also just wanted to mention that we did have, the county had a technical management committee, otherwise known as T M C, last week or the week before, of which the county is still contemplating what they are going to do as it relates to recycling to include the potential of having recycling ordinance that could mandate some form of recycling. So, we have both Micah Maxwell and Curbin that attend those meetings, and will continue to monitor and bring back any ideas or anything that passes as a result of that. That is all that I have.
Okay, thank you. City Attorney verbal reports.
Just, not much. Just to mention that Thursday evening, I will be out of town, so Owen Kohler from my office will be covering for me Thursday evening, but available by phone if the council needs anything. I know all of our one-on-ones this meeting, this week have gotten kind of moved to different times, but happy to talk on the phone, but I will be out of town on Thursday.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, Council on Discussion Items. Councilmember Beckman.
I wanted to give a presentation on my trip to Sanibel Island. So, I finally got a PowerPoint from that city, and, and I kind of put it together and made it mine with some information. You can pass that along. And so, I'm going to move down here and, whoops, can I have, oh, I've got mine here. And, and go through some slides. There are a lot, but I'm going to go super quickly, so don't keep me, we won't be here forever. Yeah, I know. So, thank you for allowing me to present this. So, Hurricane Ian happened September 23rd last year, and on February 15th, I traveled down to Sanibel Island with some members of the Suncoast League of Cities. So, I had Mayor Cookie Kennedy from Indian Rocks Beach and Tyler Payne from Treasure Island, as well as some of their city leadership. We took a van down, we collected some donations, and went down to Sanibel Island for a presentation on their experiences. And every single department member, as well as their mayor, Holly Smith, and their city manager, Dan Sousa, were there and gave a very long, almost four-hour presentation about what their experiences were and, and what they learned. And so, I had asked for this, you know, I gave, you know, I don't know, five or 10-minute information after I did that visit in February, and then I had asked them for their presentation so that I could reference it. It took a while to get it, but I've got it. And so, I, I looked at that presentation, and then I also looked at the presentation that Javon Graham, our EMS Division Chief, kind of narrated with our Parks and Rec leadership and our police and fire leadership that went down to Lee County, I think more in the Fort Myers area, and volunteered post Ian. So, I put attributes on those slides, and I'm going to do my best to go through them. And I've reviewed those slides, graciously reviewed those slides, with both Javon and Dr. Derek Smith, who is our emergency management specialist, and they're going to chime in here when they want to, whenever you want to. We kind of went over this on, on Friday. So, I'm going to click through the slides. Are we good? Just, well, I just, let's see, can I just hit next? Oh, good, all right. So, they had some before and afters, they had multiple bridges that were impacted on Sanibel Island. Sanibel Island is not Clearwater, so I think their population is about 6,500, it's really small. And I've removed a couple of slides that you all had on there, on your printout. I took off, especially after talking with the gentleman and my own self, because they were related to planning, and it's because I couldn't speak on their planning slides. I, I don't, I wasn't informed enough and didn't take good enough notes. And they also have different planning requirements, which is interesting. They have 70% of their land is conservation land, and so when you own a piece of property, you're only allowed to build on 30 to 40%. So, when we drove down there, even post, you know, in February, it was like going into some tropical forest. There was so much greenery there, but that's part of how they plan their land use, which is unique. Okay, so they had some befores with these bridges, and then afters, and then you can see the attributes. I put on the right bottom of the slides if they came from Sanibel or if they came from Clearwater. So, their causeway bridge was breached in five areas, their marinas were unavailable, toppled boats, broken docks, all that stuff. The cost of rebuilding the bridge, $285 million. These are just some visuals. When we went down in February, so September, October, November, December, Jan, almost, you know, five months, there were still wires all over the place, just swung down, you know, and, and not usable. So, again, the devastation was unbelievable. Everything still had this gray muck dust, not wet, but muck dust on all the greenery that was there. So, even though it was green and lush, it was dusty green and lush. So, even the rain, after months and months, hadn't washed enough of that mucky stuff away. So, it was kind of gringy, grungy. Only 4% of their properties were not affected, is what they said. Again, these are some of their visuals. They had to get a barge outside of their barrier island that they used to bring in equipment and supplies, and then they had to figure out how to transition from the barge. from the barge onto any kind of stable sand. The entire electrical grid was gone, they reported. Debris was everywhere, in trees. This is a picture of a dumpster up in a tree. When the woman who's in charge of ecology or agriculture spoke, she talked about dolphins and sea creatures that were dead up in branches. So incredibly devastating. And debris was, I think I have another slide. Debris was out in the water as well. So as you had boats trying to navigate in, at the water to try to get back on the island, they might hit a car that was out there submerged that you couldn't tell. All sorts of debris that got both, you know, destroyed on land but pulled right back out in the water. So again, visuals. We drove by this one, so I don't know when they took this picture, but when we drove by it on February, those three lower, or at least the two lower levels were all boarded up with plywood. So it's good that it was still standing. And part of their message was their updated codes did work for newer buildings, but you still couldn't inhabit it because the water just flowed, you know, in and out. It was just, it really was devastating. There were piles of debris still along the neighborhood roads as we drove through. Okay, so from Sanibel city manager Dan Sousa, who has been a veteran of a number of hurricanes, including Charlie, Ian, Wilma, and Irma, says never take your eyes off the storm track. Storm surge is always predicted and rarely materialized, but it came here. And it's interesting, in today's Tampa Bay Times, the front page story is about being aware of hurricane devastation. And when you read that, it says storm surge causes the most devastation. You guys want to jump in? All good? You pop on up here if you want to, you know. But, you know, these were some of his, you know, some of the notes I took. One of the things Holly Smith, the mayor, said was like, the hurricane came on land, and then she said it was like some washing machine. It just churned around, all that water and wind and storm surge churned around before it left.
Good morning. Javon Graham, division chief, emergency management. When we discussed some of these slides, one of the things we did want to push forth was the messaging to the community. What they spoke about was never take your eyes off the storm track is exactly true. And one thing we try and push with our messaging, don't focus on the center line. Unfortunately, those down in that area did because they didn't take into account the entire time that they were always in the cone of a threat. And so for them, the messaging, we need to make sure the community does take it serious. Storm surge and wind, the combination of both are a horrible combination, and they faced all of it. And our community, our beach area, would have faced the same thing if it came our direction, like it was originally planned. So yes, we definitely need to make sure we focus on the entire cone of error. And that's one thing that we're actually doing a drill this week in coordination with the county, with focusing on preparedness and awareness so that everybody can make sure, not only from a city perspective but a community perspective, that you're prepared and always stay alert and stay ready.
And then these are some of the learnings, again, the city manager, Dan Sousa, went through that I think especially Dr. Smith is in charge of, is pre-contracting for anything and everything. Boat shuttle service, diesel and propane delivery. They learned that diesel was preferable to propane, that generator maintenance is needed every eight days. Vehicle repair, these tire repairs were significant. They meant, you know, certainly fire, police, everyone mentioned that a number of times. One of the things they talked about was offering new residents information about what it means to live on a barrier island, that you need to get, you know, a barrier, a pass to get on and off a barrier island. And I don't know, you know, that we do that or that we want to step that up or coordinate with the county. I know that there is one in Largo scheduled. Did they, did they have it last Saturday?
I believe so.
Okay. You know, so we are putting out all the hurricane preparedness information. And it started, you know, started June 1st. But again, to continue to inform our residents. Yep. Anything else on this one? Doug?
As of the contracts this year, we have a, basically a data collection contract. I've asked quite a bit. It's called the Program Delivery Manager. And what they're going to do is take our data that we get from all over departments, package it up very nicely, and send it off to FEMA because we're still working with FEMA on quite a bit of things that we're still trying to figure out and get through. And so instead of us, you know, putting our time into it, we have this contract in place.
They've got everything, and you guys have things under control. But I just, you know, I went down there, it took, like, we were gone 12 hours. And then I spent four, over four hours with those city leaders and came back with, you know, this impact and this understanding. I think it's just important to share this information. Again, visuals. So safety of people and property was our top priority. And again, they, this was primarily the message from the police chief, is that thousands of laborers came in and they would steal from houses. It was one of the biggest challenges. Kind of this chaos. They said their pass system should have required that you need to prove who you are. People self-deployed, you don't know who they are or where they're from, but they come on the island. It was a huge challenge. Now, they suggested that you have to come out with the crew yourself and supervise if you have a pass onto the island. But as I've learned from our leadership is that those passes are controlled by the sheriff's office. And we have so many along our, you know, I don't know, how many miles is it along our western border for our county? Like 40 or 50 or something? At least something like that. And so it's going to be hard, but I don't know if, you know, if there's a discussion of having photo ID when you come on and off after a huge hurricane like that.
They are required to have photo ID, and that is part of the pass system. And again, our PD works directly with our sheriff's office and everything to make sure they do have that sort of security. Now, again, for some of the barrier islands, we're only responsible for a certain portion of Clearwater Beach. The others will be handled by the other law enforcement. And so our police force does have a good grip on how to secure off the areas and make sure they can provide that sort of security. But again, again, if we had that type of event coming through, it is not just our PD. It's a combination of our PD, it's a combination of the sheriffs, it's a combination of the Coast Guard, it's a combination of military support from the federal government. This type of event, what they dealt with, no one organization or entity can handle all of it. So you're going to need your incident management teams and your other components that come through to help support our infrastructure at that point.
They talk, go ahead.
And with official resources for missions that you get from the state, there are businesses that do credentialing for you. So Fort Myers, there was a camp, and there was a company that did passes and photo IDs and things like that. So there are ways to address some of those issues.
And then, yeah, part of the things was they suggested, considering different type of pass systems, because you have city employees that are out there in a devastated area doing work. Residents want to be there, contractors, insurance representatives, and real estate agency. And then have that pass distribution center somewhere. Obviously, it's kind of a no-brainer offsite, you know, in a hotel or someplace that's still standing. The other thing was they had to bring paperwork and show up verification before anybody got let on that island as far as what they could control. Then there were logistics and survival, about where are we going to put base camps, food, water, sleeping showers, bathrooms, FEMA trailers, generators, charging stations, temporary communication towers, all that stuff that this is.
It is a county-wide issue. Every time we meet with the county director, she's asking for real estate from the cities. We're circling a particular site, we want to make sure that it's good. So with our debris contractor, we have to work with them to find a site for their equipment, for their housing units. This might be a large enough site that we also include the county in as well. We've just got to go get with our Parks and Rec department and make sure that's a good site before we advertise.
Shared radio frequency, I know you guys are all on top of that, making sure everybody's able to communicate. They said they needed more radios, offer hotspots for communication. And then this message kind of came from the mayor, Holly, more about the importance of communicating with residents every single day in multiple ways. They just needed to have a touch point every day, whether it was Facebook, whether it was a website update, a little video, something that they needed to be reassured that this is where we're at and this is what we've accomplished. EVs that were submerged in saltwater were an issue. The fire chief talked about that and having to hose down, you'll see in the picture, the electrical golf carts that would catch fire after they had been submerged in saltwater. And a number of people, they had to remove, I guess I got the number there, 276 EVs from people's homes that they left behind. So people would then call the fire department or police, the city, and say, hey, EV's in my garage, or I left it there. I don't want it to blow, you know, catch fire under my house. Can you pull it out? So they had to go in and tow them out, which is crazy. There's a picture, that was from Sanibel. So they've got these golf carts that are on fire, not on fire. And then finance, I'm not going to, you know, you've got this number and all of this, but essentially, you know, their taxes were affected, their ad valorem taxes. And then there was state legislation passed that said if you weren't able to inhabit your house for, I think it was 30 days, your taxes could be suspended. So this is the reduction in their collections. And the ask to the state for reimbursement was more than their annual operating budget. So it was devastation. These are just some pictures about what Public Works had to do. And they had to sift sand for all sorts of harmful debris. So that was one thing. Solid waste was a challenge. They needed dumpsters for grocery stores to get rid of rotting food and produce. And then they needed to ensure that they shut down the wastewater system before the storm. And then after the storm, they had to get generators to work any lift stations. So it's just, SSOs are an ongoing issue. They have oil notices. Again, all those mutual aid agreements set up before.
Yes. And so we do a lot of this infrastructure that they were having issues with down south. We actually have that as part of our planning. And so when we were having our discussions, we found out from dealing with different entities down south that they weren't, their infrastructure wasn't as resilient as we were. We do have a very strong system with our utilities and our PDs and our solid waste. So a lot of this is already part of our planning, which they did incorporate as part of their planning. They've actually adopted some of the practices that we have. When we went down there, like our Parks and Rec, we're moving on and we're having, not just reliance solely on contractors because we found that that's always not a good thing as well. During Irma, for example, one of our contractors who was dealing with our debris monitoring decided to leave because we didn't get as direct of a hit. So we have to coordinate our contractors along with our resilience and stability of our own infrastructure. And our team does an amazing job of doing all that stuff. The combination of both is what makes us successful.
Okay. Again, this is an example of, again, when they presented to us, they were really proud that they got a couple of these beach areas open. But it's about communicating with residents about how things are moving along. Here's another one from their Parks Department. And this is some before and after. We actually drove to that one and walked out. More information on Public Works and some visuals. They hired some FEMA specialists to help them look through that. And this is the, this is the debris data about how much debris had to be collected and moved out every single day. And it's in tons and tons. Again, this is the tonnage. And again, you've got to figure where is that going? Are my roads clear in order to get there? So they, yeah. As of mid-February, more than 1.6 million cubic yards of debris were collected. And it was seven days a week. And then this is some information about permitting. It opened up about six weeks after the hurricane. They had, on February 15th, they had had over 2,000 permits in the works. Code enforcement was certainly overwhelmed. They had a 50% rule. You can't spend more than 50% of the value of your home to repair it or you'll have to demolish it. So that was huge. And then the council approved waiving 25% of the permitting fees. And they initially waived the demolition fees to get those things cleaned up.
There's a bill, 250, in the Florida legislature that's just passed. It's going to affect some of these permitting issues, expediting. And we're going to get with our permitting staff to make sure they are aware of the language and see how we can help them.
Is it no stress on our, on our permit?
It's requiring expedition on some of those items, so it might be.
Okay. Maybe we can get contractors to help us with it. Okay. Again, you can read through this. They, I think one of the things with this slide is when we drove down there, there were a number of homes that had motorhomes on their property. And so you had, and businesses with a motorhome or some kind of a mobile home thing. So you had to be real flexible about allowing people to live on their property when they couldn't live in their house as they're working through repair. The planning department, you know, I guess, I think I removed those because I didn't know all about the different types of, they have different types of permitting and classification. Sign was, they had to, the council changed their sign ordinance or suspended it or modified it a little bit in order to have more flexibility with letting people know, my business is open here. Okay. One of the key takeaways was that the city manager needed to have and communicate specific criteria for when that barrier island was going to be open. What are we looking for? And he said that 80% of the debris had to be removed from roads. And so it's not just, you know, it doesn't feel right today or safe, but something that people could keep track of and measure. And the police chief made sure that he had sufficient assets to keep the island safe. They had a curfew set up initially, initially 7:00 PM to 6:00 AM, and then they allowed more flexibility. And that's, all good? Okay. It was important for Parks and Recreation to get something up for some sense of normalcy, to clean those playgrounds. I think I remember our firefighter leaders who went down there talking about needing to have a community park cleared up enough for people who were there. This was their February thing that they showed us. Natural Resources, a lot of damage that was done with the salt intrusion to all these freshwater areas. And the woman who presented the natural resources section talked about all the sand screening replacement volunteers that wanted to come and do something and help, which is all great. But again, there's danger. You know, there's danger with all sorts of metal and glass and dangerous debris. Let alone, they had some kind of like flesh-eating bacteria in some of these ponds where there was salt intrusion. So they had, you know, they had some warnings about that. This talks just about their beach recovery and getting some dollars. And then they had other things about having to be aware of wildlife and what the restrictions are if you see wildlife nesting and can you build while wildlife is nesting. And I know we're familiar with that, a little bit with that threshold game over the weekend with fireworks and the eagles. They kept their, it looked like they were keeping all their requirements about their planning and permitting that's more native, you know. So they're landscaping 75% native required. So again, when people are rebuilding and permitting, they want to make sure that they know we're building back the way we want to have this island look. All right. Then Clearwater police officers, firefighters, and professionals from Parks and Rec traveled down to Fort Myers. And then October 31st, Javon gave this presentation. And these were some of their learnings. You all have this, right? And so I just attached these slides. Anything we need to highlight?
A lot of stuff is already covered. We have to do programs and processes that we already have.
So those are there. Again, these are some of our Clearwater officials who went down there. This is theirs. So they went down a lot sooner after the impact than I did. I was a month after. And they've got some pretty impactful photographs. So again, it's just, you know, it's lucky it didn't hit us. But this could be, you know, North Beach Sand Key. Both of you guys, though, said we're particularly high, our elevation level. So I wouldn't, hopefully, we wouldn't expect some of kind of this visuals in, you know, Sky Cross, Cross Lake, or... Sky Cross, Cross Lake, or...
Inland, we'd have a Tennessee to be a little bit better, but we don't know.
Right.
An event of that magnitude can cause significant damage as far inland as a few miles. So we do have a high point, Clearwater Park is considered one of the high points. And that is part of the county plan, that that's where we bring in resources if we need to from a county perspective. So that gives you the perspective where South County is very low. We do have at least a little bit higher component in our, in our city.
And so all three of those departments, Parks and Rec, Fire, and Police, gave us their learnings and takeaways, which this is what these gentlemen are working on. Yep, and that's it? Okay? Thank you for helping me. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, just one thing, and one of the questions we had in our discussion, how do we get the public to listen? Unfortunately, the more close calls you have, the less people take it for real. So as people listen to this, they still need to heed the warnings. When you're told to evacuate, evacuate. When you're told to leave the area, leave the area. We had 5,000 evacuate during Ian. And if we would've had those kind of impacts, we would've had a lot of fatalities as well. So as you talk to your constituents, or you talk to the public, remind them the season is supposed to be less, but it only takes one to cause that considerable amount of damage. So just have everybody listen.
Yeah, that's, that's a key. You know, we had a great presentation, by the way, council member. We had that issue in 2004 when Charlie came through. And I went to the EOC, it was on national TV, telling people to get off the beach, get off Island Estates, get off Sand Key. And a lot of them didn't. I went to all the fire stations and all the shelters and wished everybody luck. Went home, went to bed, and told my wife to wake me up when it starts rocking and rolling. And I woke up at 3:00, the sun was out, and went over Cape Carle. We were lucky, because it was gonna be a four, they were supposed to come straight up Tampa Bay. But a lot of people didn't leave. And since we've had a lot of storms that haven't really hit, it's getting more and more. People are just like, that's not gonna hit. It's gonna turn, it never hits here. So we have to really hammer that message home. Because if it does, it's not gonna be pretty. My friend owns the Islander Trading Post on Perry Winkle in Sanibel. He stayed, his wife left. Fortunately, he had a second store above his garage. He watched both his cars float away, five feet of water. He's not on the beach, he had five feet of water through his store that just ruined the whole thing. He's lucky he's alive, and he said that. He said, I'll never stay again. But he's rebuilding. And he said it was, it's been a mess. And he had to go out there with his own people, because like you said, if he didn't, anything he had that was still not trashed would be gone. So good, good lesson to learn. Okay, I put on here about a discussion for Drew Street. We had a lot of interesting comments about Drew Street. We, the city manager I met with, Whit Blanton, via call last Tuesday. Talked to him. We had a call with FDOT a couple of weeks ago that the Assistant City Manager, the City Manager, and a number of departments had sat through. And the biggest frustration for our staff was we weren't getting information from DOT in a timely manner that we needed to take a look at to see if these numbers and studies that we've been told about in the modeling is accurate, is it correct, is it dated? We also heard a lot from Mr. Blanton about examples of other cities where this has been successful. So I called each and every one of those cities. I'll start with Mayor Ward in Gainesville, where they did their downtown street, Main Street. He said Main Street is a collector's street, unlike Drew Street, which is a minor arterial. He said, we have numerous other streets that people can use when it gets busy, so it's not a problem. Main Street's basically a destination. It's like Cleveland Street, except it's a little more bustling. So that's an apples and oranges. He did go on to say, I'd be very hesitant to do this on a street like Drew Street that has traffic that's going to downtown businesses, downtown entertainment centers, or to the beach. Orlando, they have a PowerPoint, Gus Castro. Gus Castro is their Planning Projects Coordinator. Been there for 35, over 35 years. On April 4th, Whit told you that, and I quote, "I don't think Orlando did the test. They just went ahead and did it." Well, Orlando did indeed do the test. And you have a 36-page PowerPoint that shows. And they did the test, and they learned from it. And they implemented the final project, the final program after that test. And they found that there were some issues. And it's been a success. And I appreciate Councilmember Beckman sending information out. It has been a success. But again, that, it's an apples and oranges. It's not a through street to downtown Orlando. It's mainly a business district. And there are neighborhoods on the east side. There's a few homes on the west side, but the west side's mostly a lake. So, but the businesses there loved it because it slowed the traffic down from 50 miles an hour, 35 miles an hour. It put parallel parking on the road, so people could then go to the bank, they could go to the hardware store, they could go to the other stores there. My former corporate office is over there. So I asked a lot of people, I said, what do you think of this? And they said, look, you know, my, my wife or my friend who likes to walk downtown and ride a bike loves it, because she can go down there and there's not as much traffic. It's slowed down, it's very safe. I don't like it, because I've gotta traverse it to get into my neighborhood, which is what you're gonna hear either way. But again, that's apples and oranges. It's not a really good comparison to Drew Street, because it's a different type of road. Anyway, let me move on. I'm trying to, I'm gonna try to make this as brief as possible due to the lateness of this meeting. Another example of St. Petersburg. So I went down, I sat with Evan Mori, 16 years as their transportation, he's the Director of Transportation of St. Petersburg. He said, this is the single most difficult thing I've had to deal with in 16 years on the job. Mayor Welch told me it's the most, the thing he gets the most complaints about on a daily basis. However, and it's, again, it's a minor arterial, the businesses there don't like it because they feel like that now people aren't going there because they have three other major roads, First Street, 16th Street, and Fourth Street that people can traverse to get through there when it gets busy. I sat in a diner with him at lunch. He put me in a corner where I could look at the traffic, and then we drove the entire corridor. And that's an apples and oranges too, because they have, and they did a test, and they put medians in at the crosswalks, small medians. So if you go out and walk across the street, which I had to do, I had to park across the street because there was no parking. You stand in the middle, there's little medians around you, so you feel a little safer. But on the east side, the traffic is two lanes. They only took the one lane on the west side. So that's kind of a different story too. But it's been successful. But again, it's the number one complaint they get, and they have three other major roads that people can traverse. I spoke with Charles Barnby, who's the Transportation Business Director in the city of Lakeland. They're going through the same process. They have a great relationship with DOT. DOT's cooperating with them completely. They've had issues, but they're testing it and they're tweaking the issues. Once again, it's a different type of thoroughfare. They have Westlake Parker Drive, Kathleen Drive, and Lakeland Boulevard that people can go around if they want to. And that's more of a downtown corridor also. To a person, they all highly recommending, recommended that we do a pilot project and study. And my major concern for not doing a pilot with a corridor study is that the current modeling and traffic numbers used for the modeling are dated. And there's no doubt about that when you look at the experts, when you talk to the experts. Also, every single outside expert said you seldom do a road diet on two adjacent roads where there are limited other options, i.e. Cleveland Street, which has been put on a road diet. Cleveland Street is now called a collector's street. That is not a legitimate street for people to travel to if they wanna get downtown or to the beach or other areas as opposed to Drew Street. You also have a memo from Omar that was done by Mead Hunt. Mead Hunt is our consultant. A synopsis of that was sent by Paul Silverman, Silverman, who was a consultant with them. And to summarize, he says, "Underestimation of future traffic volumes in the corridor in downtown area based on recent planned development activity." We sat on that call, and the city manager, Assistant City Manager, heard DOT said, that they said that the Gotham Project, the Denunzio Hotel, and the park, the amphitheater, were not part of this planning or modeling. Wasn't included. We talked to Whit Blanton last week. He said, I don't think you're gonna have any problem at all with the amphitheater. Okay, I tried, yeah, he's a professional. I tried, but you know what? As I, since I've come on board here, my number one thing I've said every time, trust, but verify. We have an opportunity to verify, let's verify. Let's see if the amphitheater, when we have 10,000 people for a show, seats 4,500, you can put another 5,000 in in the back. Or we have a Fourth of July where you might have 25,000 people in the park, what that does to the traffic counts. Number two, he said, "There's an underestimation of potential traffic diversions on parallel streets." Corridor studies were not done. The studies were done just on Drew Street. We need to see what the other corridors are going to handle so that we can then plan after we implement this, what we do with those other corridors. That's extremely important, as you heard earlier, to make sure we have a plan for all our roads, all our corridors, and everything we're doing. There's no analysis of impacts on traffic operations on parallel streets carrying the diverted traffic, same thing I just said. Overestimation of capacity of parallel streets carrying diverted traffic, i.e. Cleveland Street. I was told these modeling done basement on Cleveland Street was two lanes in each direction from Belcher. It's now one lane, it's promoted to traffic diet from Belcher all the way down to Garden where it dead ends. Lack of consideration of operational changes to Drew Street with a two-way bike lane. I was told that might not be in the current plans, I'm not sure. And that's the problem. A lot of us aren't sure what really what a lot of this is, because no one can get any real answers. Lack of reporting of key measures of effectiveness with regard to traffic operations along Drew Street, i.e. travel times. The one modeling showed in 2045, if you take an hour, or it could take 156 minutes to get from US 19 down to Osceola. Now, when I spoke to somebody, I said, that won't happen because people won't wait that long. But, I mean, that seems ridiculous when you think about it. Oh, you wanna go to the beach, you wanna go downtown, let's go to Universal Studios, it'll be quicker. Just doesn't make any sense. That's why we have to do a study and check this out. Lack of discussion of measures of success to evaluate the merit of the project, i.e. speed reduction, increase in bicycle trips, limiting the amount of increase in vehicle travel time, and a lack of consideration of the unique special event use of the corridor, which we talked about. There are a number of other things, I can talk about this stuff later Thursday night. But this is why our experts said we should do a pilot. There's a high value in doing a pilot implementation in Segment 1 and/or 2. A pilot should be done as inexpensively as possible, limited to signing and marking only, no signals, and only minor resurfacing, mill or overlay. It will allow the city to monitor the traffic impacts and design challenges and identify needed adjustments before FDOT finalizes and builds a permanent design. Right now FDOT's a 10 or 15% design, is what I'm told. It'll allow the city to set measures for success and benchmarks and be transparent about how it is or how it's not going to work. So here's my bottom line. And I've talked to a lot of people. I walked the street with Mr. Reardon. I promised him some things, I don't think he believed me, that's okay. I am not trying to stop this. I am trying to make sure we do it correctly out of the gate. I would point to the Roundabout, that I inherited as mayor in 1999. The city manager at the time wanted to bring me up from vacation. I said, I'm like, I'm not coming up. I don't think it's gonna work. There was a fountain in the middle that sprayed cars that went by and got people disoriented. There was a wall around the fountain that you couldn't see the traffic coming from the other side. The ingress and egress on the turns were too tight, which backed up people. And there were multiple accidents because of all these things. And, and they didn't take into account pedestrian. So what did we have to do? We had to hire an expert from Australia. Flew him over, sat him on top of the Hilton for two weeks to look at every single thing that happened in that Roundabout over two weeks. He came back with recommendations, took the fountain out, took the wall down, increased the ingress and egress, just making it more gradual, so it wasn't just a sharp turn. So it goes off now like this, as you can see. That costs a significant amount of money. There's a question of how much it costs, nobody really knows. I did talk to Margie Simmons over the weekend, our former financial director. She said it was at least a couple million dollars. She said, because I had a heart attack, because at that time, we didn't have a lot of money. We were pretty cash strapped. So this is why I think we should do a study. We should make sure it's done right. We can memorialize that study. I've told people, I don't, I'm not gonna recommend we take it away if we do the study. It'll stay until FDOT can do the project. So we'll get this done a lot quicker than we're gonna do if they start the project at the end of next year. They can't start it until at least July next year, because that's when the budget is. We shouldn't lose any funding, because this study won't take that long. We can get it done, they can, they can draw up the plans, we can approve the final plans. If they can't start till the end of next year, why would we lose funding at this point if we do this? It doesn't make any sense to me. It sounds like a red herring. So that's where I am, that's my brief comments right now. I have more to share on Thursday evening and open it up for the council. Do you have anything to say, Mr. Robert?
Well, I appreciate all the homework you did on this. I know you did a lot, because I've talked to a lot of people that you've talked to, so.
Including Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah. And as I said the last time on the dais, that, you know, I know a lot of people want to see a change. I think everybody wants to see a change to Drew Street, because it's dangerous. But I understand that we don't wanna make it a worse problem for all the development that's gonna be happening and the people coming down to the downtown later. So we've gotta do a little more homework on this. And I suggested before that we should, and I didn't know how long it would take, but I was for, as long as a city didn't have to pay $2 million to strip the road and move all the signage, wouldn't be a bad idea to try it out and see how it's gonna work. I know that there's gonna be some changes from Myrtle to Osceola, you know, down to Osceola. Because I know that that's gonna be a point there that's, especially when we open the park. And we're gonna know this at the end of this month. I mean, July 4th, we're gonna see all the people coming down and going out, probably worst-case scenario. So I think we have an opportunity to really see how it's gonna work. But I would be good with, with having the test pilot program as long as it doesn't, they don't need a year to do it. I think if we can do it quickly and we can do it at a low cost, I think, everybody's, you know, it's just like a negotiation, everybody's gonna have to give up something. Nobody's gonna have it exactly their way all the time. But I do think that, in my opinion, safety trumps everything else. But I think we can get it fixed, safety-wise, and we can make everybody else happy. Let's go ahead and, you know, there might be some design changes that we find that we need a little tweak here and there, and it works fine.
And that's what we saw in Orlando on that 36-page PowerPoint you got. They weren't major, but they were important changes that they made.
Yeah.
So, so I've had two independent assessment studies of the data for the FDOT project. And I came up with about 16 data points that were either questionable, missing, or perceived to be incorrect. That's alarming to me. Now, I know that Drew Street is not safe. I think I'm the only one up here that drives on those three streets every day. Cleveland, Drew, and Fort Harrison. So every day I've seen how much Fort Harrison was a failure, as well as Cleveland Street. I mean, we can't even have trucks to deliver our goods on Cleveland Street. And I know Drew is not safe. So to say that I don't care about safety is incorrect, because I do care about my own safety and the safety of my family. It is because I truly do believe that the solution before us, in my mind, will not solve the overall problem. We're just exchanging one safety issue for another. So the striping, to me, seems like a great tool. Because at the end of the day, it will appease one side's concerns and validate the other. I would be thrilled to be proven wrong. If we do the striping and it shows that it is an effective solution, that I will be happy to adopt it. But I think this is too important to just put a Band-Aid on a, on a big problem, especially when the data is questionable. So for me, striping is the perfect solution. And I realize that it may be perceived as postponement, but I don't think it will, because it's not gonna start before July. And best-case scenario, it does work with just a few new tweaks. So let's proceed with that.
And I don't see how it could be perceived as postponement. If you memorialize it and you stay, you keep it. You're gonna get done a lot quicker, you're just not getting the final product done. But you're getting the safety measures worked out much quicker. And that's what baffles me, is when people say, oh, you're just trying to kill this. If I wanted to kill it, I'd just say, go with it, and then see what happens in the future. That's not what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to just make sure we do it correctly with this council's approval. And then you memorialize it and you keep it. And then you tweak it once the final, once you get the numbers, and you see what's gonna happen. Vice Mayor?
Safety triumphs everything, except when the business community wants...
Safety triumphs everything, except when the business community wants to make a couple extra bucks. And that's how I feel about it. We took a goat, and we said the safety of the folks who live on Drew is the most important thing. This past week, I was almost in two accidents on Drew, and I drive Drew all the time. One was the most common cause of accidents, where I was in the left lane behind a guy who decided suddenly he had to stop and turn into a driveway. So I had to slam on my brakes and watch the car behind me to make sure that he slammed on his brakes. That's the most common accident there. Then there was another one that scared the hell out of me, where I was pulling out onto the street to the center divider there where you can merge into traffic. I looked down the street to my left, there were cars way down at the end of the block. Okay, I got time there. Anything here? Nothing. So I started going forward, and I looked back this way, and there's a guy barreling way over the speed limit right toward me. I had to slam on my brakes and I screamed at the top of my lungs as I saw this, and then I realized, well, I can't stay here, because I'm right in his path. I don't, I don't want to waste the time to look behind me to see if there's anybody behind me, so I gunned it and I got out of his way. The only thing the speeder did was he spent a lot of time honking his horn as he went by me. These people who have been dealing with this for years and years and years on Drew have not gotten any help from the city. Even, you know, it was a struggle just to lower the speed limit by five miles. It's insane that we're so unrespective to the problems that they're having there. Accidents, injuries, deaths. So, you know, if we want to keep this essentially the way it is, and just allow, you know, all the people who live there to suffer, I think that's what's going to happen. Doing the study, striping it, I think it's just going to delay it, and the delay, I think, is to derail. And no disrespect, but we took the vote, and then there was behind-the-scenes maneuvering from folks, including Amplify Clearwater, to get Senator Hooper to put language into the state budget that stopped this debris tracks. I kind of resent that. And if Amplify Clearwater is so concerned about business downtown, I go to their events, there's always a big table with Scientology at the front of the event. Scientology's a partner with Amplify Clearwater. They are the single biggest reason why nobody has come down for the past 50 years, because Scientology has made the area radioactive. And we spent $85 million to put in this new park, just trying to fight back at that. The people who are in Amplify, including Amanda Payne, if they can't go to the members of their group and say, listen, you have the ability to talk to the Scientologists, to bar up all these buildings and let them sitting empty, if you can't tell them, go to the scottage and tell them to stop this crap, I don't understand why they should be able to affect anything else.
With all due respect, they tell me, and I'm new at this, that their voice wasn't heard or considered. They had a meeting with Mr. Bland in 2020, and he said to them, and I said this to him on the phone call we had with the city manager, so you can cover this, that he said to them, I hope you don't do anything to stop this. And she said, that's the last time we were involved in any discussions. And I will tell you, there's another group of people that you need to consider too. And again, this is not a delaying or stopping, in my mind. It's not. It's just to do it correctly. And, you know, your thing you cited, that's horrible. If we strip it and slow the speed down to 35 and make it one lane, that's not going to happen. And the other group of people, and I will be very careful how I say this, is your employees. I've had probably 15 meetings with different departments, with the city manager, assistant city manager, and there is a lot of concern about the employees, about getting here in a timely manner, and just how difficult it is now. With retention problems, and with problems of attracting employees in this environment, that's a key stakeholder group, along with the business community, that needs to be considered. Now, I'm not saying, again, I'm not trying to stop it, we need to fix Drew Street. But there's a lot of concern there. There's a lot of concern across the board, there's a lot of concern, I can tell you where I live, when I tell people about that, they look at me like I'm crazy. I know there's been a ton of public discussion, and there's been a lot of meetings and a lot of studies, but when we do this, just like when we did the Roundabout, buckle up, because there's going to be a ton of people complaining about the traffic that they can't get through it. We'll have to deal with that. And again, I'm not trying to stop anything, I just want to make sure we do it correctly, and we take into consideration the other roads, and we have a plan for all the other roads, so we can be safe, we move the traffic down, we can get traffic out of the amphitheater when we have to, two lanes one way with smart signals according to DOT, which made me happy when I heard that, and other things. And plus, on the middle lane for emergency vehicles to traverse, your fire department is extremely concerned about that. There needs to be a middle turn lane contiguous for emergency vehicles, and it's an evacuation route. We need to be able to get at least two, three lanes off the beach from, or out of downtown on Gulf to Bay and on Drew Street. So those are other concerns, but those can all be addressed in a study, and we can memorialize it and keep it there, get it done a lot quicker than waiting over a year for FDOT to be able to get to it. Again, that's where I'm coming from. Yes, ma'am?
Did you want to?
Go ahead, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just want to say, we're going to get all the complaints about traffic and congestion anyway, because we are not ready to have thousands of people coming to an amphitheater. We don't have parking downtown. We haven't really seriously been talking about parking ride lots in other parts of the city.
Which we need to, we need to.
Yes, so these are things that have to be worked out, but that didn't stop us from building the amphitheater.
I wasn't part of that, so I can't.
Yeah, okay. You know, it seems like we don't have the votes for it anymore, anyway, so.
So it's my understanding that with that wording that Senator Hooper put in, that there is some short study that's in the process, is that correct?
There was supposed to be, but I haven't seen anything yet. Now, they did four and a half days, they did four days. They did it in April, but I think that was before this went down. They did it in April around noon to Friday around noon. We haven't seen those numbers yet.
Well, do you think we should wait? We asked for that shorter study, mini-study to, why don't we wait and look at those numbers?
Well, those numbers will all be part of anything we consider.
So we don't make a decision until we have those numbers in? Because we asked for that study, and now we're jumping ahead and not waiting for that?
That study doesn't include the road being...
It's just a traffic count.
Yeah, it's just a traffic count. It doesn't count, but this, again, all the experts tell me that we should do this like they did in Orlando, like they did in St. Petersburg, like they did in Gainesville, like they're doing now in Lakeland, and then you put the final thing in. Tara?
Tara Kivett, City Engineer. FDOT shared with us that their required study with the change in legislation is a good six to eight months.
Okay.
So we won't have that in the next month. They may have the traffic counts, but they then need to look at the bigger picture and actually do some analysis and evaluation.
So do we just tell them to stop? I mean, are we not waiting for that study and those results to come in?
I mean, that study can begin immediately if we stripe. I mean, that's the whole idea.
I think part of the problem is, we don't have an idea of how much striping costs. And, you know, when I talk to Whit, the possibility is two to $4 million. There is no way I think we should be spending anywhere near $2 to $4 million to stripe, to see if this is going to work. I will tell you that I talked to, I called and had a nice conversation with Gus Castro, the Transportation Plan Projects Coordinator at Orlando as well, who worked his way through their Edgewater Drive that you have attached, and I spoke with Orlando Commissioner Stewart, who lives in that district and is part, he lived in that district, wasn't a commissioner as Edgewater was being discussed, and he's a commissioner in that district right now. And the striping that you're proposing and all these concerns should have been brought up three or five years ago. And to bring it up as a hail mary at the midnight hour is ridiculous. I mean, Amplify, businesses, other people should have been at those meetings all along. I was, we had some of the first ones when I was first elected. Neighborhood representatives are there, other leaders are there, they have a place at the table, they don't just check out and not weigh in. And so, yes, striping can be valuable, but at the beginning, part of the project, not when we're getting ready, you know, to put a shovel in the ground next June. And so I have a problem with that, waiting until the last minute to ask for this. Number two, I have a problem with the cost. We better have a firm idea of the cost to the city to do any kind of striping, and how long it'll take before we really entertain it. The other thing is, FDOT has said, you know, they're satisfied with the analysis and findings supporting the lane repurposing and will not pay for any test. And Ford Penellas isn't going to pay for any test as well. And so it just, I can't understand why we have metropolitan planning organizations, we have the Florida Department of Transportation, experts, state experts, who have come down and said that this road will benefit from this diet, they have numbers, and for some reason, you choose not to believe them at the last minute. And, you know, you can shop around for independent people who will give you an opinion on something, but this is our state agency that we're second-guessing now. I just, you know, so this will cost the city. And I think a study, by the time you stripe it, whoever's going to pay for it, and you get people acclimated to it, it's like a year. You're not just going to stripe it and start taking measurements within six weeks and think people are used to it, and get accurate data. I mean, this is why it's done years in advance, at the beginning parts of a street. I will say that residents have asked for this safety. If everyone says safety is number one, okay, it is for me as well. If you're planning on striping, what's your alternative to reducing the fatalities and crashes on Drew Street? Nobody's talked about a Plan B. There isn't really a Plan B out there. And so residents have asked for this, it's been discussed at various levels, FDOT, the county, Ford Penellas, resident meetings, the councils for years. We are in the middle of design, and FDOT hopes to have the design complete by the end of this year. So construction bid can be let in June of '24. Your quote of us being at 10% to 15% design, I don't, I thought it was much further along. I don't know if we have anybody here from FDOT or Ford Penellas that can confirm that, but it's, I believe it's much further along than 10% to 15%, and it's not complete. So these concerns can be brought up as we continue the design process, but to interrupt it right now is foolish. It's easy to criticize, but I would ask you, where are your alternatives that you're talking about? Do we really want to sacrifice public safety and human lives to ensure status quo of Drew Street? And here are the positives from the Edgewater example that's attached to the agenda. And I would say, you know, the different cities that you're talking about that have done a striping, how many have said, no, that didn't really work, we're not going to, we're going to ditch the whole plan? I would bet not many. You know, both Commissioner Stewart and Castro had told me that before and after the evaluation, there were very good results. He said, we're not taking capacity off the road, the function of who uses the road, and that the safety objective was first and foremost paramount. He did say that, you know, you have to have a paradigm shift. There's a perception of your community, and it's a paradigm shift. It's a function of the road providing access versus the road providing a thoroughfare. But here are the positives that I think are important to highlight on your Edgewater presentation. Collisions dropped by 40%. Injuries fell by 71%. Traffic decreased by 12%. Bicycle and pedestrian use increased substantially, which, let me tell you, we just talked about our 2045 comprehensive plan. All the things that our Drew Street Diet proposes tie in with those goals of our 2045 plan that we went over. If that's what we agree to, we need to put our money where our mouth is and go forward with this. We can't say one thing in a comprehensive plan and say, this is great, after all that community feedback in the comprehensive plan, and then come back and say, yeah, not really, we're not going to do it here. So anyway, the corridor, the Edgewater corridor, has seen 77 net new businesses open and 560 jobs created since 2008, since they did that road diet. The value of property adjacent to Edgewater Drive has risen 80%. The most dramatic results were in long-term real estate and business investment, and the value of property within a half mile of the road has risen 70%. This is data, this isn't, I just think it'll work. These are positive results when you make a street walkable. And I think we really also need to consider our new CRA. So we have the North Greenwood CRA, that's right off of MLK, right, Plaza Park, all those neighborhoods that want to be able to walk to our downtown. You talk about us not having any parking for our amphitheater and Beautiful Park, we don't. How nice would it be for those neighborhoods, the communities in our CRA, to be able to get on a bike or to walk down with their children in a stroller or a wagon to the park? It's not safe to walk down Drew Street. I mean, we have poles in the middle of sidewalks. I was on the Kelly Kelly Show a couple of weeks ago, and their sound engineer was making chit-chat or something before the radio program started, and we were talking about Drew Street, and he said, I never travel in the left lane on Drew Street, left turn lane, because it's not safe. I mean, people don't, people know that Drew Street is not safe, and so before we consider anything, I think, number one, let the study we asked for play out. Number two, we need to have a firm dollar amount as we talk about striping, not just like, let's give the go-ahead to, and then we realize it's two to $4 million, and also answer to our residents, where's the $2 to $4 million coming from? And, by the way, it may cost $2 to $4 million to take the striping off if you don't like it. So it could cost more. So I would say those two things. Let's wait for the study, you know, and allow stakeholders to be part of the discussion as we continue on with completing the full design. But I don't think we go forward until we know the dollar amount for what we're talking about. And really, we need to answer the question, why don't we value the studies of professionals who have said that Gulf to Bay and our other parallel roads can handle the overflow?
Okay. So I've been really trying to be cognizant of the fact that this is an emotional issue. Both sides feel very strongly. I believe that both sides have the best interests of Clearwater at heart. I do not question either side's integrity. But there are unfortunate comments that are being made that really saddens me, because everybody talks about diversity, such a sexy word, especially politically. Everybody wants diversity, until they don't, until they think convenient. Diversity is not just about looking different. It's not just about ethnicity, race, gender, it's about diversity of perspectives. So if I have a different perspective on what I think the solution is, why is my integrity or agenda being questioned? or agenda being questioned? That's a slippery slope that we should not go. I think we should all respect ourselves, that we all equally care about Clearwater, we just think differently on how to achieve our goals. But being, but, you know, statements like jeopardizing safety for the status quo, this is because of the business community demonizing a community within our city. We either own a business, we work for one, or they feed us. So, let's not demonize any portion of our community. Safety trumps everything. Again, it's insinuating that I, because I have a different view of what I think is a solution, you're questioning my integrity. And I just don't think that helps. It's just divisive, and it's hurtful, and eventually, I'm going to get tired of it, and I'm going to throw it back, and I'm going to question you. And I don't want to go there.
I don't believe that you were maneuvering behind the scenes to do this.
Well, let me tell you something.
Drop lump you in.
Hold on, I'm going to interrupt you. Let's just say, worst-case scenario, I am doing a hail mary. Let's just say that. That's because whoever is doing that believes very stringlessly that what they think is the solution is not happening. You know, again, going back into my nursing background, if you have a gaping wound, gaping wound with a lot of blood coming out, the human reaction is, let's cover it up, let's put a Band-Aid, right? It makes us feel great, we covered it. But if it keeps bleeding, and if it's a big problem, that bandage doesn't do anything. We need to know if there's a nicked artery, if there's an infection, if there's a blood clotting issue. So, questioning my integrity or anyone else's that just doesn't agree with you is just a slippery slope we shouldn't go. So, let's discuss the data points, let's state our case, but let's not get nasty.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah. All right. First of all, I am the representative from Ford Pinellas. Second of all, I did come out originally stating that we should be moving forward on Drew Street because it was a safety issue. However, the lot of things that have happened since then, and I do this up on the dais a lot, when I hear different things, I change. Sometimes my thinking changes. So, even though I think it is a safety issue, I do think it would be a good idea to stripe it, and let's go ahead and try it out, because I've heard people from both sides say that, you know, one of the ideas was, well, we shouldn't do anything on Drew Street, let's go ahead and buy up, you know, the right-of-way, and, you know, they'll put another 20 years on this. And so, I haven't, I threw that out right away. Here's my concerns. My concern is, I know that Ford Pinellas, Clearwater, have worked hard to get funding for this. We've got the funding from 19 all the way to the bay to take care of Drew Street. Drew Street as a complete street started years ago. It's a great idea, it's part of the green print. And Drew Street has never been a good street, because I used to be a biker. I mean, I still am, but I used to really bike. And I biked Drew Street, I won't say a lot, but after four or five times, I decided I'd maybe change streets and go to another street because it was very dangerous. And pedestrians, there isn't even a continuous sidewalk on Drew Street. And this is the main street in our city. So, I realize that there's a lot of things that need to be done to bring Drew Street correct, correctly. And there's some, there are some things that will not happen, even though we'd like them to, to make, you know, it wider, because we don't have any more width. Like you say, we've got telephone poles in the middle of the sidewalk. Some of the things that have happened in the last four months, and I know that pretty much the council has been wanting to move forward on this project, but we've had some concern from other people that maybe it doesn't, you know, the credibility of some of the facts, which even I got a question myself, because I don't know, I haven't read the whole report from DOT, and I don't know if I would understand how they even came up with those figures. And I've asked for that. I've asked them to come and explain to us how they project out till 2045 and 2050. How do they do that? I'd like to know, so I can tell my constituents, here's how it's done. My main concern is losing the money to take care of this, and then it doesn't happen like Sunset Point didn't happen. So, if we can get this pushed another year, which Whit Blanton tells me he can do that without losing the money, that's why I'm for going ahead, getting this thing striped, making, let's go ahead and tell ourselves, like, around about, is this going to work or is it not going to work? Let's move forward that way. It's a little more cautious, but the job is going to be done, but we're going to know if it's going to be done right or if it's going to be done wrong. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay. Yeah, and with all due respect, this is not a hail mary. I sent an email on April 4th. If I couldn't be here, because I had surgery that morning, or I would have shown up, I wasn't allowed to be right on the record. If you would have implemented it that night, we'd be two months into this project already, probably have it striped already and testing. So, I pushed it back two months. What you didn't do in 2018, when it was recommended, I have the documentation, it shows it was recommended in 2018. I can't answer that because I wasn't here. So, this is not a hail mary for me. This is a, this is a project to make sure it's done right. The only thing with striping, you're going to get slow traffic, you're going to be able to do counts, like you talked about in Orlando, you're going to see that accidents go down if it works, and it should, because it's going to be similar to what it would be in the permanent project. You're going to see traffic speeds reduced, because there's no way for anybody to go around anyone. The only thing you're not going to get, Mr. Reardon, at that point is your wider sidewalks probably immediately, but you're not going to get them till the end of next year anyway. So, if we do that, if we do the striping, you're going to get the traffic calmed much quicker. We'll do our study, we'll do our corridor study on the other arteries, we'll see what we need to do to those roads and other streets, and we'll move forward with the permanent project. We memorialize it, means we will not take it away. I want to repeat that. This is not a push to take this away or not do it. I'm not going to get upset if people come and say that, because that's not, I'm going, this is like the third time on the record saying that. I'm not taking it away. At least, I'm not going to lead the effort to take it away. I can't personally do anything by myself, it's up to the council, but I'm not leading that charge. I want to make that perfectly clear. I want this to happen, I want it to work, I want people to be safe on Drew Street, but I want us to have a complete study. And as far as the outside experts, this is not like a court where you bring an expert and he's going to say what you want. These people are professionals, they're qualified, they're as qualified as the FDOT people or Whit Blanton's people, and they would be offended by that. One of them is our personal consultant with Meeden Hunt, Paul Silverman, who I was told is very qualified, years of, certain years of practice. And I believe there's a meeting on Wednesday with DOT that Meeden Hunt's going to sit in it, with Tara, the city manager, can't be there, she's booked, but Mr. Duck will be there, and they're going to talk about what this would cost, and we'll find out. From what I understand, Meeden Hunt says it shouldn't be expensive. FDOT said it would be if you, you know, changed out red lights and did this and that, but they told me we didn't, we don't have to do that for the study.
Tara Kivitt, City Engineer. We did a very high-level in-house estimate based on the latest plans that we've seen for the proposed project, which are concept plans from March. We would go in and mill down, remove the old asphalt, put down half of the asphalt that would normally have to go back, so there would be some lips that we would have to deal with at manholes and edge of concrete. We would do some striping. The pilot, we recommend anywhere from six to 12 months, because you want to get through the, and that also mimics what FDOT is recommending. Then, we would have to put the final asphalt back and re-stripe, let's say, let's say we do restore it back to its current configuration. That total estimate from Osceola to Keene is about three and a half million. It's about two million to come in and do, remove the asphalt, put some new asphalt down and stripe, and then it's just under a million to then restore it. And that's based on our unit prices. It's, again, very high level. I don't know the details yet of truly what FDOT would require as far as the median turn lane, you know, the left turn lane that they are proposing medians in. Obviously, you'd have to address that so that it doesn't become a through lane. I'm not sure exactly what their expectations on that would be, but so we're looking at around two million and then another.
That would be if you took it back, which we don't have any plans to do.
Right. But we would at least have to put the final asphalt down.
I have a question. So, when I go through construction zones, you know, especially to the airport, and it's, all the traffic is redirected every two months, and all the lanes are restripped, are you telling me that every restriping, every couple of months, is two to four million?
No, because the two million to go in and do from Osceola to Keene, a lot of it's going into mill, put down new asphalt, that's the bulk of the price, also mobilization, MOT, the striping is minimal.
Right, but isn't there, is there an option where you don't do any of that? Just paint over the existing yellow and then re-yellow it or use cones or something? Something a little bit more temporary and less costly?
FDOT would not allow that.
Okay.
Well, let's see what happens in the meeting on Wednesday, and come up with a number.
They've already stated that to come in and sandblasts and paint over, they would not, that is not acceptable to them. So, that's why I came up with this approach of milling, putting down, like, you would come in and mill, let's say, three inches, which can be fairly typical, two to three inches, then you'd put down just one kind of wearing course, stripe, leave it in that configuration for six to 12 months, then you'd come in later and put down the rest of the asphalt, and then put it back to normal, or leave it. But what we haven't addressed is like any other, that's something else we're going to talk to FDOT with on Wednesday, is other things related to the project, like any utility relocations, any changes in flow line, these other things that are different than what we're just talking about here.
So, the million and a half at the back end, couldn't that come out of the final project if we didn't? We're not going to change it?
In essence, it could, yes, but I.
And that's kind of what.
We haven't talked to FDOT about exactly.
I wasn't given a number, but I was led to believe that whatever cost would come out.
No, and I'm sure my estimate is lower than FDOT's.
Well, let's see.
And this would, we'd have to, you know, work with them, they would want us to take the lead, so that would take some resources. They would want a design, they'd have to come in on the design of this new striping plan. I don't know the details on if they would let us bid that out under our control, or if they would, you know, there's some questions still.
And how long would that take?
We'll know a lot more Wednesday, but I would say it's at least, could easily be three to four months before you would see any work done.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments, yes?
I have a couple. So, you know, some of your, the phrasing, like, if it works and it should, you know, and that the experts are just as qualified, as far as we're not, you know, we're talking about different experts' opinions. Experts are just as qualified as FDOT. But I would ask, why? Why, why are we questioning FDOT? And if we say, and if it works and it should, then, you know, and we wouldn't have plans to put it back, it's like, why spend four million dollars for this test? It's just unnecessary. And if we don't have medians there, I fear that, you know, it's not going to be accurate. People will use that left lane to pass or to cut through. We need to have some medians where there aren't cross streets to allow people to cross Drew Street safely. Hopefully, they have a flashing, you know, crosser, and then they cross to the median and go over. But it's, you know, again, the whole statements about if it works and it should, and both experts are qualified and all that, doesn't lend credence to spending four million dollars or so for, you know, a six to 12-month project. And, you know, Ms. Kivitt said her estimate is probably much lower than FDOT's, doesn't take into account staff time, which we're, you know, our staff is incredibly, we're understaffed and overworked, and, you know, what about other details about police presence and all that stuff with reconfiguring? I just, I just feel like it's going down the wrong, the wrong path. And again, I would, I would come back to, again, always ask, and this is what Mr. Castro said, always ask, what is most important? Safety and reducing crashes. And then the positive, you know, data points about businesses actually thriving, growing, and property values increasing, and that nobody said, wow, I wish we wouldn't have done it. I don't think we have anybody who has a street, a complete street, or a street that went onto a diet similar to ours. And again, everyone is different, and you said that with your examples. But I don't, I would beg to differ that there are municipalities that say, yeah, we shouldn't have done that, we need to go back to this four-lane-only configuration or something.
Businesses are thriving because it's a business district. Drew Street is not a business district. You're not going to have thriving businesses on Drew Street, because until you get past Myrtle, there are none, or until you get up near Keene.
Right.
So, it's a residential area. It's not, that's definitely apples or oranges, that's just, you can't use that as a comparison.
But I think the businesses east of Keene could improve, and also, you know, businesses down MLK, which is going to be a corridor as well. But, I mean, and I think that's your biggest point. My biggest point for, that you just stated, is that from Keene to Osceola, it's residential. It's residential, and it needs to be safe and walkable and multimodal. It needs to conform with our 2045 plan, which actually articulates Drew Street in it. And I think this is an opportunity to make, make good on that, on that promise and intention.
Fair enough. But again, it's, we want to get this done, we want to get it done correctly. It will be immeasurably more expensive if we use a plan that doesn't work because modeling was dated, big projects downtown were not included, to rip it up in eight to 10 years, when we're all going to be gone. But Mrs. Parry is going to be sitting here having to deal with it if it doesn't work. So, if we do a pilot, we're going to know what works, what needs to be tweaked, memorialize it, leave it there, and trust me, it's going to be a lot more expensive if you have to rip this up.
To do what? But there's not a Plan B that we've talked about.
The Plan B is to look at the results like Orlando did, tweak turning lanes, tweak signals, that's it. There's no other, and then the rest of it is the corridor study, to see the impacts on Cleveland, to see the impacts on Palmetto, see the impacts on Sunset Point, see the impacts on Gulf to Bay, and those streets then can be planned going forward. That's the plans that we're talking about, and that's the plans the experts talk about. You have to have plans for all those. Those corridors were not studied when this study was done.
Whit told me they weren't. Whit told me that Gulf to Bay has enough capacity to take it. I mean, I trust our experts.
It's not that I don't trust them, but I think the numbers they're using are dated, and it's been proven. Any other comments on this?
We'll need direction in terms of what it is that we're going to be doing on Thursday night, so.
I guess we're going to be discussing it and then taking a vote?
A vote on what?
On whether we strip it or not.
So, we have the cost, we know the cost on this thing?
We'll know, we'll know, there's a meeting on Wednesday, we'll have information.
I have a question. So, if this is a $12 million or so project, and FDOT won't allow us to just re-stripe, I mean, they're planning on milling and putting asphalt on there, can we get reimbursed for half of it, since we're putting back half? I mean.
Tara Kivitt, City Engineer. So, we did share this with you, this came from FDOT. It was shared with you from TAMI last week, and that's where FDOT's even saying grinding or water blasting is confusing and is not, you know, they're saying to resurface it. So, yes, I'm sure part of those estimate dollars that I shared with you would have been spent in the regular project. We haven't talked to that kind of.
Well, that's why I'm bringing it up, because if you're talking Wednesday before a meeting, maybe that's a question you needed to ask.
And I don't believe FDOT has worked on a cost estimate, to my knowledge. So, Wednesday, when we talk to them, I doubt they would have something ready by Thursday night, but I don't know that. night, but I don't know that for a fact.
Well, the question would be, to me, the question would be, if we go and do the work, some of the work that is in that project itself, can we, even if we put it up for, can we be reimbursed for it?
I would imagine as long as we follow their standards.
Their guidelines, yes.
Exactly. For procurement, you know, so actually, when I, I said the three to four months, that's probably too short, because they have a robust procurement standards. If we have to advertise it, we have to put it out for a full bid, that's a three-month process. They're, they're, they do things a little differently than we do, like we frequently use our C, our continuing services, C-MAR. I doubt they would allow that. Those are some of the questions that we haven't ironed out yet.
I can't imagine we would have any kind of contract, because I'd want all that numbers in writing about, is FDOT going to reimburse, how much is it going to cost, how long is it going to take? You're not going to have all that on Thursday, there's just no way. So I don't know what we would vote on, on Thursday.
You know, we may have, I'm hoping Wednesday morning to get some concrete feedback from FDOT on their temperature for this, what they think this would look like. We were supposed to meet with them last week, it got rescheduled, so more of high-level type things.
And a timeline, yeah.
Timing, right.
For sure.
So we'll have some of the picture items, but not specifics.
And the risk of, all right, so the risk of losing $10 million for this project, the $10 million has been allocated from FDOT to Forward Pinellas for this, is that correct?
Federal government.
Federal government. FDOT said it's a pass-through, we might have nothing to do with it.
Okay, so federal government, and, and Forward Pinellas has the $10 million that's been earmarked for Drew Street, correct?
Correct.
And so if there's.
And to be honest, I'm not sure of the amount, I thought it was eight, but I could be wrong.
Okay. I've heard it bumped up a bit, but I don't know.
And I don't know the details on, in that.
Yeah, at least eight, okay. And so, yeah, all right.
All right, so if we can't have firm answers by Thursday, can we put this on the next council agenda?
I would say it's only on the agenda if there, when, when there are firm numbers, correct? Because otherwise, we don't.
We should have firm numbers by, what's in the next council agenda, June 15th?
June 12.
June 12. Is that work session or council?
It's a work session, so we will leave it, need it to have it on the agenda.
Okay.
I highly am suspectful of having firm numbers. You, didn't you just say it's going to take a few months to get firm numbers?
Well, they would be estimates only, until the project is actually put out to bid, the numbers are not firm. They're cost estimates based on some current unit prices that we have.
So I was told, when we had conversations, that FDOT would allow us to do this. So does that expedite it and allow us to use our, without going through their bid process? I mean, that's kind of what I was led to believe.
I would have to talk to them about, do they require a competitively bid advertised versus a C-MAR approach, which is a little bit of a hybrid approach.
Okay, fair enough.
You know, or, we could maybe add it to one of our existing contracts.
Okay, so what's your pleasure then, as far as?
I mean, we can vote on Thursday to proceed, you know, at least give direction to the staff, yes, go get the numbers, talk to whoever we need to, give us the scenarios, if we have enough support.
Yeah, I would recommend that. I think in terms of working with our other agencies, that having direction from the council will make it a lot more comfortable for them, as well it is for staff, in terms of what it is that we're supposed to be pursuing. So even if the vote is to, you know, or do we get consensus on direction today as to how it is to move forward, that would go a long way in terms of working with our partners.
That's what you need from us.
We would greatly, all of us, would greatly appreciate that.
And let's say we move forward on this, asking for extra time, the vote has to go back to Forward Pinellas for that.
That's September, isn't it?
I don't know when it'd be on the agenda, but I mean, that, that's a step in the mid, I just wanted to let everybody know, that's a step that has to go in to delay it.
I spoke with Dave Eggers about this, and he's on Forward Pinellas, he said.
I don't see a problem with it.
He said that if, if, if we're going to do a test at times now, before we get too, too far down the road. I had a long conversation, had the suggestion of Mr. Reardon, and so.
Whenever we have a discussion about numbers, and a potential cost and all that stuff, I think we need to have some recommendation about where in the budget this comes from, what's cut, what's, we don't have four million dollars to throw around. And so I think that needs to be part of a discussion for our residents, especially. I want to know where that money's coming from.
I, I don't think we heard it's going to be four million dollars, but we'll see. I think we have to be careful with what numbers we throw out there, because we really don't know. I don't disagree with that, that's a good point.
So do we have consensus, or at least majority, to instruct the staff to, to move forward and get all the information needed?
Or do we need to take a vote?
Well, you can't.
Take a vote, yeah.
Can't take a vote.
You don't feel to take a vote today. So I tried very hard not to weigh in on this topic, because this is, you know, a political topic, not a legal one, but just for process, and just to facilitate process conversation, my suggestion is that, and to Ms. Kivitt's point on the procurement issues, because FDOT's procurement practices are somewhat different than ours in most cities, my advice would be for us to talk with one of our C-MARS about what it would cost, at least as an, at least as an estimate, so that we can have that number ready. I know we're not going to have that by Thursday, I get that, but, so we can at least start that process to give the council an idea of what it will cost if FDOT allows us to use our own procurement practices, and if the council decides to go in that direction. Because right now, you haven't really been equipped with that information. And so to Councilmember Regman's point, I mean, how can anyone be expected to intelligently weigh in on anything without, without that? So I don't know, to Ms. Kivitt's point, if FDOT is going to allow that or not. Sometimes there can be a disconnect between the conversations that, you know, the mayor might have at a very high level, you know, in a very senior level of the administration, by the time that gets down to the local level, sometimes there can definitely be, in any large organization, communication discrepancies. And so FDOT is no different than any other agency in that regard. I can tell you, having represented a state agency in my career, they're larger organizations. And so sometimes, you know, we might come away at a senior level thinking we know what's going to happen, but it may not be compatible with some of FDOT's either current thinking or local thinking, or way that they have done things in the past. So my advice, just on a process level, is that if we get that quote internally from, from our C-MAR, one of a couple of things will happen. Either FDOT will say, no way, we're not even going to consider that, that's just not acceptable to us, and then we at least know, you know, what the answer would be, or they would say, yes, that would be acceptable, and then council knows with some level of specificity what it would cost. And to Councilmember Beckman's point about the budget, yeah, I mean, that's going to be required in any item that's presented to council, funding source has to be identified, so it's going to be very transparent, and I think it'd agree completely, and it's going to have to be. So I don't think there's going to be any secrets, I don't think there's going to be any surprises, but right now, it's difficult to ask the council to really, you know, make a lot of decisions, because you haven't been given, I think, a lot of that information. So that would be my suggestion on a, on a process level, if the council is interested in going that direction at all. And if not, that's fine, too, but if you want to go that direction, I would start with us hitting the C-MAR, that, that's how I would go about it, if that's the direction you want to go.
I'm agreeable to that.
I am. Bypass.
You have enough to give direction.
Okay, we got direction, as we were just flippantly told.
Right, I mean, it's important to emphasize to the clerk's point that no one's voting on anything, you know, right now, you can't vote on anything, you know, there's no public input, et cetera, I mean, Florida law is very clear, even if you, even if there was consensus right now, there'd be no voting on anything, if this is just a work session. But sometimes having more information is better than less. I don't think, from what I have heard, there's any reason to believe that our acquisition of top, of a price quote from our C-MAR would in any way jeopardize or delay either the project, or the funding, or anything else like that. This is just Tara talking to our vendor. I don't, just my two cents, you know, although I'm very hesitant to weigh in on this, I don't see a lot of harm in that. If, again, if she comes back and we find out that that number is either not a number the council's comfortable with, or not a pro-budget source they're comfortable with, or FDOT isn't comfortable with it, everyone, including the public and the council, are going to have opportunities to review that. So I don't think there's going to be any surprises here, and I don't want the council to be surprised by this. The manager and I have talked about this, you know, quite a bit, and, you know, to her, to her point, this has become a pretty challenging issue, I think, for staff. You know, as, as we, as Councilmember Dushay had pointed out, this is an issue where there are some pretty diverse opinions in the community and on the dais, and I know everyone wants to do the right thing for Clearwater, including our partners as well, so.
Can I ask a question about using the, is it construction manager at risk of it, right? Is there a cost? I'm sure there's a cost to ask them that question and get that data. Anytime you call an attorney, it's a, you know, a $300 charge. I mean, just because we have them on our list of approved, we're paying for that expertise, or even that ballpark figure, correct? Nothing's for free.
The ones that have worked with us a lot usually will give us a high-level cost estimate, free of charge.
Okay.
They do want, they do want our business, and because of, because of the way that Florida law applies to us when it comes to procurement practices, and to Ms. Kivitt's point about continuing contracts, you know, we have a roster of entities we use, and, you know, most of them would prefer to keep our business, and I think to be in relatively good graces. So I.
But it will not be even, they won't even bid it out. You know, they may ask one of their subcontractors, or they may even use some previous data to give us the estimate. You know, when we use a C-MAR and actually issue a GMP, they've actually bid out the work. They will not do that. This is just a high-level cost estimate.
But there's time involved, you know, it's somebody's expertise, but, okay, so they do a pro bono for us, yeah.
You know, because ultimately, they're, they want our business, and they know that we're not obligated to, to go with them.
Yeah, you know.
So yeah, for the most part, it's a terrorist point, you know, they're not going to give us the line item, you know, a, a GMP, as you pointed out, but we'll at least give the council a ballpark, and if that ball, what's important, I think, is going to be two things that we'll get from this. Number one, so that you can have an estimate of what it would cost, like, is it even the ballpark of something the council's interested in, or is it just not in the ballpark of anything the council's interested in? But number two, regardless of the dollar amount, is FDOT actually going to accept in concept our procurement practices? And regardless of whether it turns out to be a million bucks, or, you know, a thousand bucks, or a trillion dollars, you know, we need to be able, I think, to give FDOT something and say, look, this is what we've got, and this is what our procurement practices look like, is this ultimately going to be acceptable to, to them? And if it turns out that the answer we get on the local level is no, then the question is, are we and is the council comfortable with that answer, or is that something that the council wants to escalate within FDOT to a more senior level of their administration? So obviously, a lot of ways this can play out, but I don't think there'd be any surprises, I don't think there should be any surprises. But to the manager's point, because this issue is taking up, I would say, quite a bit of, of resources and time.
Et cetera.
Much more so on her side than mine, my advice to the council would be to, to give some direction, just so we can at least start to do something, and ultimately give the council all the information that each of you are looking for, so that you can be comfortable voting on something, or making a final decision, if there is one that's necessary. I mean, right now, you just haven't been given, given that, so.
And, and hard bidding may be more economical, but at least we'll, after we have some discussions with FDOT, we'll better understand the timeline.
Okay, fair enough. Anything else? Okay. All right. Any other new business from the council?
I'd like to discuss citizen engagement regarding Imagine Clearwater. I've received quite a few requests now that it's opening around the corner. There's a lot of, there's many citizens that want to be part of that endeavor, and so I want to discuss some options. And then the second thing I would like to bring up is the Charter Review Board voted recommendations. There's one specifically that I want to discuss with the city council.
Okay. Any others?
I'd like to have, with new legislation that goes into effect July 1st, I'd like to have an update on legislation that will in particular impact the city, especially that Live Local Act, what that means for our affordable housing developments kind of in the pipeline, or ones that are interested. So I'd like that. And then also an update on our ARPA fund grant distributions and the timeline for those little grants, the education, the arts, the North Greenwood Grants. Where are they at when people, grant recipients can expect to have the dollars in their hands and the contract, you know, fleshed out, so.
I could just ask, just ask a question.
Sure.
Would you like to have a discussion on that, or are you looking for the staff?
Just an update, just an update on where they are. I was, I was at the first round graduation, and then I also know, and that's Brent Dawkins, and they, I think they received $25,000, and he was just wondering, when's it coming? And I don't know when it's going, so.
I would say on the Live Local Act, I'm certainly happy to do a presentation on that. I'm not sure if the clerk, I would like to have our lobbyists also come, kind of to review in general the session and.
Which we typically do, so I will go ahead and reach out to them and see now that session's over.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right. Come in.